Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, for those of you in the room and if you're watching for doing so. We appreciate your interest. Councilman Chulo, if you'd lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow our heads. Father, as we prepare ourselves for our meeting tonight, please give us the courage and clarity we seek so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of our community. Please give us the strength to prioritize our tasks tonight, embracing each challenge that comes our way with an open mind and a heart that is focused on the love and compassion we have for each other. Father, in the whirlwind in which we are all so busy, help us find our voices tonight, which are guided by our personal true north, our desire to please you and be respectful at all times. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing and action for a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit. Brian, I'm going to toss this to you, please.
You, Mayor and Council, as you just indicated, this is a application for a special use permit. And I apologize if I get this name incorrect. The applicant is Mr. Kuntul Gandhi. Property address is 1425 East Beach, and the applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a hotel. As a quasi-judicial hearing, we will conduct this in a manner to ensure substantive due process and procedural due process. We generally follow the North Carolina rules of evidence, is somewhat like a court hearing, but we won't follow them as strictly as we would in court. All witnesses who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn in. They will then be subject to both cross-examination as well as questions from the board. The applicants who have the burden of proof are entitled to a fair and impartial decision-making body, which means that your vote tonight must be based solely on the competent, substantial, and material evidence that's brought forth during this hearing, not something you might have heard outside of the hearing. To make sure you're fair and impartial, I need to ask, the council has a whole few questions. And Madam Clerk, if the answers are in the negative, if you'll so note in the minutes.
Yes, sir.
The first question is, does anyone on the council have a financial interest in the subject matter of this SUP application?
No.
No.
Does anyone have a business relationship with the applicant?
No.
No.
Does anyone have a family or familiar relationship with the applicant?
No.
Okay. As I indicated earlier, the property location's at 1425 East Beach. I'm sure you're aware of this location or where it is. But for purposes of tonight's hearing, my question is, has anyone made a site visit to the site to assess the substance of this application?
No.
Okay. Have any of you had any substantive conversations with staff outside of the context of this hearing about the subject matter of this application?
No.
Has anyone had any substantive conversations with the applicant outside the course of this hearing regarding the substance of this application?
No.
All right. Can any of you think of any reason that would prevent you from being fair and impartial and prevent you from basing your vote solely on the competent evidence that you hear tonight?
No.
All right. The order we will proceed is we'll first hear from staff, I believe, from Mr. Kirkland. He will present the item. Again, he will be subject to cross-examination and questions from the board. Then we will hear from the applicant. They have the burden of proof, and they must prove through competent material and substantial evidence that their application meets the four criteria that can be found on page six, I believe. That's section 4.9.3.6.1 through 4.9.6.4 of the Town's Code of Ordinances. Again, you can find that criteria on page six of the agenda packet. At this point, Mayor, I would ask all those who wish to provide testimony to either come forward or stand. Madam Clerk, would you prefer them to just stand?
I don't think there's that many.
Okay. Come forward and be sworn in.
Raise your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Thomas said that the evidence he gives to town council during this hearing shall be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, et cetera. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, before we get started, I'd like to address the issue of standing. We've had that come up in the past. There's basically two levels of standing. The first is providing evidence in this hearing. Generally, standing would require someone who's not the property owner to have special damages which are distinct from the rest of the community. In the past, we have been pretty liberalized in what we allow. And here, however, at the next level, if this were to go to Superior Court, the court would determine legally if someone has standing. I can only think of one instance in all of our hearings in the past where we haven't allowed someone to speak, and that was because that person stated they did not have special damages. So unless there's any questions from you, Madam Chair, or the council, we'll start with Mr. Kirkland. Any questions?
Everyone good?
All right, Mr. Kirkland.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. As Brian just said, this is a quasi-judicial hearing to determine whether to issue a special use permit for a hotel located at 1425 East Beach Drive. Wait a second here. It's on. There we go. Mr. Gandhi has applied for a special use permit to allow a hotel within the Commercial Recreation Zoning District. Once again, in the Commercial Recreation Zoning District, a special use permit is required to establish a hotel as a use. The property is located, as I mentioned, at 1425 East Beach Drive. It's on two tax parcels, 235 PD 003 and 235 PD 00501. The proposed hotel includes 51 rooms and approximately 20,000 square feet of floor area. As soon as Mike comes back with my clicker, I'll... Oh, he's going for me. All right, got it. So here's an aerial photograph of the property. It also includes some zoning. The two parcels in the middle that are highlighted in kind of a teal color are the parcels for the proposed development. As you can see, a portion of the Ocean Crest Hotel is on that middle parcel, and the pool is on that parcel to the right when you're looking at the screen. On either side of this property, all the zoning is CR, and the surrounding zoning is R7 residential zoning here in the town. I'll get to one last slide here. And then the last slide for me, as Brian just mentioned, the applicant has the burden of producing competent, substantial evidence tending to establish the facts and conditions to grant a special use permit. We've included those, not only in your agenda packet, but up here on the screen, and I'll read through them for you briefly here. The first one is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan that's submitted and approved by the issuance of the special use permit. Number two, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Number three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, or that the use is a public necessity. And number four, that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan that's submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity to the land use plan. That's all I've got for you this evening, unless you have questions.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Mr. Kirkland, it looks like pages four through 26 of the agenda packet are the agenda materials related to this item. Would you like to introduce those into evidence as Exhibit A?
Yes.
Is Mr. Gandhi in the audience? Do you have any objections to the agenda packet related to this, your application coming into evidence, sir? You have that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In light of no objections, Madam Mayor, I would recommend we accept as Exhibit A pages four through 26 of the agenda packet without objection.
So.
So received? Okay. Mr. Kirkland, when staff process the application, does staff look to see if the application as submitted met the criteria of the Code of Ordinances applicable to special use permits?
So staff reviews the technical requirements of the zoning. So we look at, does it comply with our landscaping requirements, lighting, height, setbacks, et cetera?
Based on your review of the application and your review of the applicable code, do you feel staff had enough information submitted to make an assessment as to whether it met those requirements?
Not as is submitted right now, specifically related to Article 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance, Part One landscaping requirements, Part Two building facade requirements, and Part Five lighting requirements. We would need additional information to evaluate those fully.
So I'm sorry, Article 10 was landscaping?
Article 10 is the performance standards of the UDO. Part One is landscape. Part Two is building facade, and Part Five is lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all the questions I have. Mr. Gandhi, you have any questions? Mr. Kirkland? Madam Clerk, let the record reflect no cross. Madam Chair, any questions from the board members of Mr. Kirkland at this time?
I have a question, Council, for Mr. Kirkland. So if I heard you correctly, the application is currently not complete. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, why would we be presenting an incomplete application?
Absolutely. So when someone applies for a special use permit and has a plan associated with it, we put that through a review in our Technical Review Committee to determine, as I just mentioned, whether or not it meets the ordinance requirements or not. Should the applicant get those comments back and say, "We want to come to Town Council anyway," I don't really have a mechanism to stop that from happening. What would happen is what's happening right now, where I tell you that the application is missing certain items that we would need to fully evaluate it.
And I do value the staff's assessment. While we're on the theme of staff, I'm curious, do you, in the Planning Department or in Developmental Services, do you have a existing checklist for impact on the surrounding community, environmental, traffic, I mean, lighting, all the kinds of things that would impact the lives of people who are around this structure to be proposed? Do you have an impact checklist that you go down?
Our checklist is the Code of Ordinances. So outside of the Code of Ordinances, no.
It might be helpful, given this is our second experience with this kind of phenomenon, to have a checklist for impact on a local level, whether it's traffic lighting, environmental concerns, noise abatement. I mean, we could create a list separate and apart, but in conjunction with the UDO that might be helpful, the Code of Ordinances. Just a thought.
Matt, if I may, this is zoned Commercial Recreation District.
Yes, sir.
How long has it been zoned?
Uh...
Prior to the last one burning down?
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, it has not undergone any rezoning. There's been no zoning map amendment out here to change that.
Go ahead, Terry.
Madam Mayor, I have several questions related to the drawings that were submitted. So Mr. Kirkland, on sheet number one, up near the top right, there's a note that says, by the way, these plans are awfully small for old eyes, I'll just tell you. This property lies within the Kama Ocean erodible area of environmental concern. What does that mean?
Yeah, I'd be happy to have Courtney Milliron, she just sworn in. She's our Kama Land Use Plan Officer, speak to those Kama regulations for you.
Courtney, if you would, just so we have clean minutes, just state your name and position with the town first.
My name's Courtney Milliron. I'm the Floodplain Administrator in the Kama LPO for the town. The note in that corner regarding the ocean erodible area of environmental concern means that that property is located within 180 feet of the first line of vegetation, and because of that, it's subject to Kama review and permitting.
But does that comment, I don't want to read anything into the comment, but does that comment mean that this property is more subject to erosion than if the comment were not here?
I mean, it is closer to the oceanfront. I don't know that the comment necessarily, I mean, that it would be more subject to erosion. It is subject to additional rules and regulations that do relate to potential erosion events than it would be if it were outside of that area.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kirkland, I've heard you say that this project passed all of the checklists that you have for TRC. So is it safe to assume that this new layout that we're being shown does comply with the CR District Regulation for Built Upon Area to not exceed 45%?
As I mentioned to Brian Eads when he asked the question, actually, our evaluation is that it is not complete as it relates to the technical criteria of the ordinance.
Okay.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't quite hear that.
It's not complete as it relates to the technical criteria of the ordinance.
Okay.
My next question's on the next page, sheet SD 0.5. Again, just because I couldn't really read some of the text, I want to confirm that everything, there's a squiggly line going across the page, and everything, I would say, north of the, or toward the ocean is the VE zone. Is that correct?
If you have specific questions about the contents of the plans, those would be best left for the applicant. He has some representation here who helped draw these plans. He can certainly point you in the direction of what means what on here.
I'm not sure he's going to know the answers to my questions, but I'm happy to save them for him.
Yeah, if it's like, what does this mean on this plan, that's best left for the applicant to present.
I just couldn't read it. It's so faint, and the print is so small.
Yeah.
And along those lines, Matt, should we reserve questions about parking and lighting and signage for the applicant, or are you prepared?
They can certainly present testimony as to how they meet the criteria of the ordinance, and that's what we do in a quasi-judicial hearing.
How many parking spaces are there?
Let's see, that's on page SD 1 in the plan set. 52 spaces is what they've got on their plan.
So one per room?
Yes, sir.
And that meets our code for parking?
Yes, sir. I believe for a hotel, it's one per room plus an extra for staff.
What about lighting and illumination?
As I mentioned, lighting is one of the incomplete sections of this application, so we definitely need more information to evaluate it for whether or not it meets those criteria or not.
Yeah, we would definitely want that. And signage?
Signage typically gets reviewed when the sign is proposed, so you don't need a special use permit for a sign. So should the special use permit in the property be developed, they would just come in for a regular sign permit. You wouldn't evaluate a sign as it relates to a special use permit, because the permit doesn't... The sign, you can come get a sign, as long as you meet the criteria of the ordinance anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me follow up a question on parking, if I could, Matt. So 52 spots for 51 rooms. How about the existing hotel structures that are there presently? Do we know how many parking spots they have?
The existing hotel is, according to their plan set, is on page, I think it's SD 1, has 42 guest rooms and 46 spaces.
20.
42 guest rooms and 46 spaces.
And just for the minutes, you identified SD 1, and it's very small print, but I believe that's on page...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm looking at the...
26 of the agenda packet, is that correct?
16.
Down here.
Yeah, 16.
It's 26. Can you tell what page that is?
Uh, hang on, I can... Yeah, 16 of your agenda packet.
There's also SD 1 that looks like on 26, too.
Okay.
So what you were just referring to in response to the council member's questions, Mr. Kirkland, was based on page 16 of the agenda packet?
Yes, sir.
That SD 1 version?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Matt, follow-up question on parking, if I could, please. So is it your understanding that regardless of where a guest is staying in the three different buildings, that they could park in any of those parking locations, or is parking restricted to whether they stay in the new structure or the existing structure?
That's a great question for the applicant. Okay.
Mark? Mark, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm struggling to make sure all the questions have already been checked off, but I do have now an additional question. Matt, so, you know, it looks like page 16 and page 26 are fairly similar, but I do notice on page 26 the revision of a reference, and as Councilmember Carter pointed out, it's kind of hard to read some of this very small text. It looks like there is a opportunity where the applicant is trying to reference Article 10. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I think so.
And did they draw in, is that landscaping that's drawn in by that, is that a six-foot fence? Again, I apologize.
Yeah, the applicant, so this, as you all are probably well aware, this was originally on a much earlier agenda item, and it's been moved a couple of times. And the applicant supplemented their original application with this page 26 in your agenda packet in an attempt to address some of those things, but our evaluation is that there's still additional information that's needed to determine whether it complies with the ordinance or not.
Yeah, I would agree that there's significant more detail that probably should be made available for the landscaping plan, because it's very difficult to make out from this rendering what that entails.
Yeah. And we have a very extensive lighting ordinance, which has a lot of criteria that need to be met. It's one of the longer performance standards that we have, so we definitely need some information on some of those metrics to figure out if it meets the ordinance or not.
And then one last item that was on my list that wasn't previously asked. You mentioned the facade of the building, I believe, in your comments, and I haven't done a site visit. Is the renderings in the application identical to the existing structures that are on the property, or are these showing some sort of improved facade, or are we expecting a different facade, or are we expecting an identical match to the existing structure? Or, and I guess my question to the applicant would be, are there plans to upgrade the facade on the existing structures as a part of this effort as well?
Yeah, I think both of those questions are probably best addressed by the applicant. Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
With respect to the building materials, can you tell us what that facade is? Is that concrete?
That's a great question for the applicant, sir. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, if I could continue my questions, several of these, I think only Mr. Kirkland is qualified to answer, and I'll try to look through them, and if I think it's for the applicant, I'll save it. So Mr. Kirkland, on sheet HD 1, and you may not be able to answer whether parking is, the new parking is pervious or impervious, but if the parking is impervious, what considerations have been made about drainage? We don't have a civil engineering plan, so how would drainage be dealt with if the surface is impervious?
Yeah, they go through stormwater permitting with the town, just like any other development, and that would get reviewed for compliance with our stormwater control ordinance.
The second question, the other question that I have is, being that this is in a VE zone, the height is restricted to, I believe, 41 feet. And as best I can tell by looking on the drawings, the building itself stops at 40 feet, 4 inches, but there seems to be a parapet that goes around the building that would put it over 41 feet, as well as the addition of a 14-foot elevator tower. So we actually allow folks to go over 41 feet with parapets and elevator towers?
Yeah, so parapet walls are allowed explicitly called in our ordinance as being allowed to go three feet over the height requirement of the ordinance. Also, one of the things that are exempt from our height requirements are mechanical apparatuses. Now, when you have a building that's more than four or more stories tall, there's a requirement that all of those levels be accessible by elevator. That's a state fire code requirement so that they can get up with a stretcher if they need to do life-saving rescue. So in that instance, this qualifies as that type of mechanical apparatus, since it's being used solely to meet that fire code requirement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One last question, Matt.
Sure.
You said we have specifics for lighting.
Yes, sir.
The lights facing the ocean, do we have specifics for that, us being a, Oak Island being a turtle sanctuary?
Sir, we actually have, let me count them, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. 12 subsections in lighting in our UDO, and one of them is specifically sea turtle protection for lighting, and that applies to properties that are within 300 feet of the frontal dune.
So we don't need, if we go further, we don't need to make that a conditional use? That's already in your...
Well, it is in the Code of Ordinances, yes, sir. That's right.
Well, Mr. Craft, may I follow up on your question? If I understood your testimony correctly, Mr. Kirkland, right now, you don't feel like staff has a sufficient lighting plan?
That's correct.
So if it were to pass in its present state, would you recommend a condition that they submit a lighting plan that is compliant with the UDO requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is not like it goes back to TRC-type thing. It's...
Thank you, sir.
Does that address your concern?
That's exact...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
I think we're good.
Mr. Gandhi, both Mr. Kirkland and, for the first time, Ms. Milleran, did I say that correctly?
Milliron.
Milliron, have provided additional testimony since the last time I asked you if you would like to cross-examine. Based on that additional testimony in response to the council's questions, would you like to cross-examine, Mr. Kirkland? Well, I mean, the applicant's going to have an opportunity to put on whatever evidence you want, but based on the testimony already provided, the applicant has an opportunity to cross-examine. If you intend to address some of the things that have been discussed in your case, that's your prerogative.
Let me respond to the three items you had.
Okay.
Right. Whoa, 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 whoa.
So you don't have any questions of him right now?
I do.
All right, same, Ms. Milliron, do you have any questions of her? She was asked some Kama-related questions. Okay. All right, unless there's any additional questions of staff, we will now hear from the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you.
Milliron. Milliron.
Sorry. My name is Tom Murphy, I'm with Olive Architecture that prepared the plans as, in the presentation. I guess addressing the three items that were raised as being incomplete, the revised drawing that you have, again, up on the screen, did address those, those specific topics, and that being adjacent to residential property that's to the east of this, of this property, does require a Class B buffer in, in the Article ten, and we're, there's an option of using a Class C buffer, which is a six-foot fence and, and eight feet of landscaping. We do indicate on the drawings that we will comply with the Article ten. That is not a specific landscaping plan, it's just indicating that we will comply with that when a formal landscaping plan is prepared. The second item of the lighting, we do, in Article ten, again, it does address the same of providing no, no taller than twenty-five-foot poles, and that all the lighting be able to be light-controlled, so all of them would have barn doors, poles would be limited to twenty-five feet. Again, we didn't make the specific light selection or lighting plan, but we do indicate that whatever lighting will be provided, we'll be compliant when a formal lighting plan is, is provided, and then we can show photometrics and all that type of thing. Just wasn't aware that you needed a layout at this time to do that. The facade materials as well are the same thing, we do indicate, and, and they will be compliant with the UDO requirements. There is some possibility of, you know, of slight changes to things. We, we have a stone-looking block veneer that's, that's on a portion of it, and some metal roofing, mansard piece, or a fascia, rather. The remainder of it, the majority is concrete, and then there's, and the facade of, of the guest rooms themselves will be a siding material, somewhat like, although it's an older style, somewhat like the, the existing property for the facade portions of the guest rooms. Kind of addresses those three items. We, they, final drawings will be compliant on all those items, it was just, my experience, I guess, in the past of special use-type things, is more of that they will be compliant, but the formal landscaping and formal lighting plans are not a part of this, they weren't prepared at this time. So I guess I'm open for questions.
Mr. Murphy, let me just, housekeeping, Madam Clerk, did you, did you say you're an architect?
I am, yes.
Did you identify your company?
Oh, Olive Architecture.
Madam Clerk, you, okay.
It's in Raleigh, yes.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, any questions from?
Is this the only drawing you have for us tonight?
The packet that's there, yes, that is, the only drawings are prepared. Again, they're very kind of conceptual, and, and mainly for zoning compliance, prepared at this time.
It's very difficult to make decisions on conceptual frameworks. There's a lot that fills in. I don't know my, my colleagues, but I'd be hard-pressed to make a determination on, especially as it relates to whether this building is harmonious with even the existing property. I'm pressed to ask what effort has been made to, out of consideration for the community in which we're a part, and especially for such a prominent location on our beachfront, what effort has been made to make this building harmonious when presented in black and white as it is? It looks like a, a Hotel Six, no, I mean, it doesn't speak very well of your firm, and is certainly not what I think the community would embrace as being harmonious with the surrounding area. I don't mean that in a.
No, I, I understand. I, I guess it was a misunderstanding of what, what exactly was being reviewed at this time. Typically, this is zoning compliance and, and compliance with UDO and, and town requirements for, for this location and property.
One of the four requirements is harmony, it's in harmony with the surrounding area.
The adjacent hotel has exterior balconies, it has the same door systems, it's just wood-framed and, you know, and a much older property. This has similarity, as I said, the siding would be the same, it's just you're, we're designing for a hundred-and-fifty mile-an-hour wind that the adjacent property is not designed for. Existing properties, the majority are not designed for that. It has, you know, what, what a hotel typically requires, without having a conditioned corridors, and it has a single loaded facing the ocean, obviously, all the glass we can possibly do on, on the ocean side, and, and the inside, because of bathroom locations and things, has no windows to the interior of that. We will make it as, as fitting to the community as possible, yes. And what's shown is essentially what, what it will look like in the end, but I can't tell you the specific fascia material that we're using at this time. It will look essentially like that, because we are limited by zoning with the parapet height and with the, the extent of the overhang. It'll generally look like that, but I can't give you colors, I can't give you, you know, specific product at this time, but that is, that is the look of what it will be.
I'm disappointed that there isn't more consideration for a beachfront area. No offense to Myrtle Beach, but we would hope for more for our community in terms of glass and concrete frontage, and not having the benefit of even a color rendering, so we can actually make a decision on harmony based on the facade. By appearance, in a black and white presentation, it doesn't seem to be in harmony with the existing property, much less the homes and things around it, so it would, it would stand out, I think, in a not complimentary way.
Were that in more harmonious color styles, and the siding at, at the room is more like the adjacent properties and a shake material or so? That's the only difference we're talking about. The construction of it and the layout of it wouldn't change at all. You're just, and you're right, I mean, in black and white, it's hard to compare to adjacent properties and do that. Difference would be that, yeah, we are showing a cable rail as opposed to maybe a, a wood railing instead, as, as to the adjacent properties. Those can all be easily done. Again, this, I had looked at this more of zoning compliance as opposed to aesthetic, and I misunderstood then of what the, what was required at this time, at this level. Typically, I don't see that in other jurisdictions, that at this point you have a final product, the more of zoning compliance, and that's really the intent of that. Style-wise, yeah, we can, we can make it look like any of the adjacent properties very easily.
Period is harmony.
Well, that's a very open word, but I understand. It is harmonious, it has the same balcony systems, exterior stairwells, same pieces. It's just, again, with the corrosive environment and the heavy winds, has a little bit of a different design than the adjacent property.
So, if I may, sir. This building is larger than the original footprint, correct?
It is.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah. How much larger?
By square footage, I don't know. By units, it's about twice the size.
Okay. And just to pick up on the mayor's theme for a moment, building new into old, surely there must have been some consideration with respect to integration of an existing structure and a new structure next to it. And I, I don't, I hear you saying, I, I designed something that's compliant with zoning, but you didn't consider new into old. Is, is that fair? I don't.
No, you're, you're fair in saying that, yes.
Is that accurate? Okay.
But, again, the design was more in showing, again, UDO compliance of all the, all the issues that are a part of that, not the aesthetic portion at this, at this point, which would come into play typically in the next level of, of reviews. I understand what you're saying with harmonious, and we were very much into that. I don't want this to be a sore thumb, and I don't want it to look like, you know, some out-of-towner came in here and threw some, some ugly-looking thing here. That's not the intent, and it's not the owner's intent at all.
Standing on Beach Drive.
Yes.
Looking at that property, I did not go out there to look at it, what is to the right of that property, and what is to the left of that property?
To the right is the remainder of the Ocean, Ocean Crest Motel, the, the second, first phase or so, I guess, I don't know which one came first, but the existing that, that is still there, to the left of it is, is residential.
Okay.
So I'll just echo what I've heard my colleagues express, which is a disappointment in making this new structure congruent with what's there, and when we look at the drawing that's on the screen now, this is a very sterile drawing. We can't see that just a few feet to the left, as you just described, is a residence, and I can't tell what the separation is on these drawings, but just a few feet to the right is an existing, the existing portion of the remaining hotel. And so I'm disappointed that we have not incorporated those views into what you really see, because if I stand on Ocean, on Beach Drive and look at this, that's not what I'm going to see.
Again, I don't want to make it an excuse in doing that, it, again, it's just misunderstanding of what you're looking at this point. Were that required? We would have done a full rendering with adjacent properties and, and the landscaping and everything else. Again, this is more of, my understanding of, in speaking with staff, and so was, this is, you know, UDO compliance, a special use of being able to replace the previous hotel that was here. I, I didn't understand that we would get into the aesthetics of the building itself. This is, I want to say technically compliant, but it, it will be, you know, better, more, more, more harmonious with the adjacent. This is, this is really just all the functional pieces, and it, you know, shows the general layout of everything. The materials are compliant, everything complies with the UDO. Does it look like adjacent properties? Adding color and materials will make it significantly different.
I think, you know, the point that's being made here, and I understand what you're saying, this is technically compliant, but it could be such an outlier aesthetically and architecturally as to be incongruent, to use Councilman Carter's phrase, or not in harmony with. So if you went back and did a new sketch, and the consideration that you have is not purely functional, but also integrating it into that existing campus, we might be seeing this in a different way. This looks like something that's just landed from Mars and sitting there, not connected to anything else, because we can't see it. And by your own admission, you haven't really thought about the aesthetics of this, which is important to a community, right? You would agree, right?
Absolutely, yes, no, yes. Again, I don't want to keep backing up to that point, in speaking with staff and preparing for this and looking at the requirements of the UDO, and so for special use, that, I never had that understanding that you're looking for a final product and, you know, what finished materials. All those things will be compliant, the harmonious is absolutely, it'll, it'll look like the adjacent.
In line with what Councilman Bock has said, I appreciate the fact that, that you all thought you were going to be heard in December, and you were hoping you would be heard in January.
Yes.
And here we are in February. If we were to ask you to bring us the full-blown rendering that you now understand that we would like to see in March, can we go down that road?
I would have to convey with the owner, apparently, yes, and we could do that.
I would like to see that before I formed an opinion one way or the other.
And in fairness to you and your client, sir, I would say that technical compliance is one thing, putting a structure into an existing community next to an existing business enterprise deserves some, some modicum of aesthetic consideration? I mean, with all due respect, I know you weren't expecting that, but I think we do expect that.
I, I've got to then tell you where you were saying earlier about creating a checklist or something like that. It should be made aware then that that is what you're looking at on this. Again, we're speaking with staff several times and communicating with things, that was never a part of the conversation, that you were looking for a final look of the building.
Again, in fairness to you and your client, I, I agree with what Councilman Kraft said, give you a chance to, to resketch this, show the, the surrounding environs, show us the color, and at least some statement of how you considered integration of the structures, right? That would be important.
Absolutely.
And in fairness, you deserve that, I know you've been twice delayed, so I want to give you that chance.
So to turn that around.
Yes.
If you would. Hotel space in our community on beachfront is, so that we have a spectrum of opportunities for visitors to come and to stay for whatever period of time they like, is important to the community. I guess I put it to you as your challenge is to make us want the structure that you intend to build. Make us want to say, that is a beautiful structure, it's in harmony with the rest of the surroundings, and we would be glad to put that in, in our community, as opposed to have to arm wrestle with you a bit about whether or not it's harmonious. That's a discussion I would really rather not have to get into.
I, I can tell you that, speaking for my firm, that absolutely, I mean, that we would, as I said before, we would not want this to be a sore thumb, we would want it to be, you know, something that would, everyone in, in the community would be proud of having, and guests and visitors, you know, would not be driving by going, oh, my God, what is that? No, definitely, we will do.
Imagine yourself living across the street from this, and waking up and looking at the ocean they may not be able to see any longer, and seeing this structure, and bring that plan back to us.
We can do that, yes.
I could just add, just, you know, A, congratulations to the applicants for the purchase, and we're excited about the possibility of a new hotel, so I'm going to put that out there. So not to be, you know, just to add a few things, if I could, is just take a drive along Beach Drive.
I've done that, yes.
Walk along Beach Ride, ride a bike, and in your mind, develop, and not, and you're an architect, I'm certainly not, but in your mind, develop a picture of what this could look like versus what you've given us. What other building materials possibly could be used, other than a concrete slab? To our mayor's point, this, to me, is, when I initially saw it, it just screamed Motel Six. So, is this hotel being built to the specifications of any type of a chain, regional, national, or local chain hotel?
No, no.
And there are no plans to make this a regional, national, or local chain hotel?
No, it's a, you know, it's a unique property, is the intent of it, a boutique or unique location, yeah. There's no branding to it, although, you know, hotel rooms are generally relatively similar, that's the only commonality to it, yeah, and then building codes and UDO requirements and things.
I, I hurt for your frustration, but I'd like to make a motion, we table this until next month.
Mr. Kraft, if I may, to follow up on some of your questions, a mere pro temp box questions, there were some comments about it being in compliance, and, Mr. Murphy, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I understood you correctly, you indicated that the landscaping will be in compliance, although there's not a landscaping plan.
No, it does indicate the UDO section that it will meet the buffer, the C buffer requirements, and, and in that buffer, it just shows that spacing for shrubs and trees, and that's what our drafting staff, you know, replicated. It wasn't intended to be a landscaping plan, and the same with the lighting, it indicates typical spacing for a twenty-five-foot pole with barn doors, this fixture selection has not been made.
And, and so the landscaping, the lighting you indicate will be in compliance?
Yes, and the facade.
You described briefly the facade as you envisioned, or maybe perhaps your client envisioned it, but if I understood you correctly, and again, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, no final decision has been made as to facade materials?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that, that, that is what's before this council tonight, will be compliant, not, what I'm showing you is in compliance. In conjunction with Mr. Kirkland's testimony, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Mr. Kirkland, but it's my understanding you, staff felt like they didn't have sufficient information to determine compliance at this time. There's a difference between saying it is compliant and it will be compliant, just want to make sure we have a clean record of what that testimony is.
No, and that's precisely where I am at this moment, because the special use permit is a wonderful tool to help manage growth. We've had it for years, and I say it time and time again, anybody that wants to eliminate the special use permit, you're crazy, because the special use permit. the special use permit allows us to apply conditions to the permit. You've seen us do it many times in the past. We may put a condition on there to match a rendering, like we'll see a rendering of a commercial development, and we'll say, "Yes, that's what we want," and we'll call that out and put it into the condition of the permit that it must meet that rendering. We may put in pedestrian improvement plans into a special use permit as a condition. We can do a lot of different things. We've looked at infrastructure capacity when it comes to developing commercial properties and making sure that improvements to infrastructure are put in as a condition. So, yes, we need the ability to see the vision for the property, because I can't sit here tonight and say, "Okay, you're compliant," but I can't put a condition that you will eventually make it look like the rest of the property or improve the facade, because I have, I have nothing to point to that says, "This permit is conditioned on this rendering, or this design concept, or this facade." So if it's incomplete in that manner, that even our own staff can't determine whether your future build is going to be compliant, then that's where I struggle. So I agree with my peers in saying, "We understand your frustration. This has been prolonged long enough, but, you know, you're more than welcome to come back in March with a little bit, you know, cleaner rendering, or a better vision of how this property is going to be developed." And that may include making some improvements to the existing property to make it, you know, comply, or not really comply, but be harmonious with the design aspect of, "This is Oak Island Beachfront property," right? And so we can apply conditions to a special use permit. We'd like to apply conditions, but I can't apply a condition tonight based on what I see in front of me. I just can't do it.
Can I, can I ask then, in preparation, I guess, for the March meeting, appears we're going in that direction, do I then need to have a final landscaping plan, a lighting plan, and rendering? Is that what you're asking for?
Mr. Kirkland.
Even though the landscaping, again, will be compliant and that type of thing? I guess I'm just used to different jurisdictions, looking at this level of approval differently.
Mr. Kirkland, would you, and do my best not to testify here, are you looking for a final plan, concept plan?
I mean, if you'd like staff to review it prior to the March meeting for compliance with the ordinance, then yes, we would need to see those things prior to. We need a, we need a facade plan, meeting the specifications of Chapter 10, landscaping plan, and a lighting plan, meeting those requirements of Article 10 of the UDO.
I would take that one step further. I mean, we need to get, as to my colleague, Mr. Martin's expressed very well, we need to be able to get a sense of the look and the feel, and what this will contribute to the community. Again, I invite you to imagine yourself living across the street from this structure and not minding it, if you will.
Well, I'll answer your question this way, from my perspective. I agree with Councilman Martin about the conditions that we would want to impose, right? So if you were to return fully compliant, instead of pledging to be compliant, we could see the landscaping plan, we could discuss the lighting plan, we could talk about traffic and what considerations you made for that. You can talk about how this design integrates old with new, new with old, fits that commercial corridor, right, has a certain sensitivity to the people who live across the street. I mean, all those things could be built into this. And in fairness to you, you're asking, suggesting what I think would be pleasing and would get expeditious approval, but this, it's really hard to judge. I think Councilman Martin's right about that.
And I would just say that we understand, all of us up here, understand that there are certain things about a project that we can't dictate. The law doesn't allow us. We can't dictate many things, but what we are asked to do is find if this project is in harmony. And that word harmony is the make or break right now, because we don't have enough information. And if I had to vote tonight, I would vote that it is not in harmony with the surrounding area.
I support Councilman Kraft's motion to table this, to give you the opportunity to respond to the feedback that you've received. And I think you've indicated a willingness to do that. I look forward to-
One more question, I guess, in doing that. The rendering that we would do, you're looking at primarily from the roadway, looking back, you don't, do you have any interest in looking for the other side as well, or primarily?
All the sides.
Absolutely.
Both sides?
Front, back, sides.
Absolutely.
We understand there's houses next door, there's houses across the street. That's a given.
There was a hearing, a separate hearing last year about a proposed hotel, and perhaps you can go back and take a look and see what they put together to kind of create a very harmonious look and feel. It was very detailed. I mean, they, what they actually gave us a landscape plan and told us the exact plans they were going to plant. So just a thought, it might make your life a little bit easier.
Again, typically, we do that, but not at this level of approval. I thought this was kind of a yay or nay on whether or not a hotel can be done or not. I didn't know we were going to get into that level of detail. My misunderstanding.
Well, just again, as a reminder, it's a special use permit that allows us to apply conditions. So the, some of the things you're hearing are conditions that we typically apply to commercial property development. So as Councilmember Julio pointed out, there was a presentation last year for another project, and they went to an incredible level of detail, showing us a vision, and not just saying they would be compliant, but showing us how they were going to be compliant. That's a big, that's a big step in helping us visualize how you're going to be compliant with our, with our building codes, right? Because we can't, we can't see that tonight. We don't see how this moves in a direction of becoming compliant. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I'm sure you and Mr. Kirkland will talk a lot between now and the next time we see you.
We probably will, yes.
We see you, but I would like to make a motion to table this until March. Go ahead one more time, Mr. Eads.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to protect the record. Obviously, this is, I would think it's very good input for the, if I was the applicant, it would be very good to receive input from the council. The applicant has the burden of proof. Much of the discussion you just heard pertains to the criteria found at Section 4.9.3.6.4, and that reads, verbatim, "The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity to the land use plan." So it's not staff's burden, it's not council's burden to guess or speculate, it's the applicant's burden to prove through competent substantial material evidence that they meet that criteria. Are you following one of them?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want the minutes to reflect the council's dictating what you have to do and what you don't have to do, but your burden is to persuade the council that that criteria is, that and the other three criteria are met. And I think they've given you some good insight of the type of things that would help them make that decision. Are you following me, or am I too much?
No, I, no, I follow you.
Okay.
So we have a motion.
Motion's on the floor. It's been seconded.
May I just say one thing for the record as well? I'm sorry. I did not have anybody else sign up for the public hearing to speak, so I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so we'll get it, you consent to tabling, recessing this hearing and tabling it to a future meeting?
Yes.
So the applicant does consent to that? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you let the record reflect that Mr. Gandhi is in the audience, and he acknowledged he consents, as well as did Mr. Murphy from the lectern?
Can I ask another question to you? Are you, are we recessing the hearing to the next, to the March 12th meeting, or are we tabling it?
It's been open, so I would recess it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know that you can table-
Amend your motion, Councilman Kraft.
amend it. That way, recess until?
I'll second it again. Let's call the question.
All in favor. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, Mr. Gandhi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a presentation from the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Sam, thanks for coming back.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. I'm not sure if, I'll have slides up there. I know we were having difficulty with that a second ago. I'll, I'll go on anyway. So my name is Sam Boswell. I'm the Regional Transportation Planner with the Cape Fear Council of Governments. That also serves as the Director of the Cape Fear Rural Transportation Planning Organization, or RPO for short. It's nice to be back with you this evening. My purpose for being here tonight is to present the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And why I am presenting this plan is, we are, we being me and partners at NCDOT, are presenting the plan, seeking adoption of the plan from local participating agencies, municipalities of Brunswick County. And this plan contains multimodal project recommendations and maps for transportation in Brunswick County. And so the adoption process that we're following can be broken down into three parts. We're presenting the plan to local municipalities across the county. The RPO, which I represent, also endorses the plan. And then, once the municipalities, the RPO, and the county as well, sorry, I forgot to mention that, Brunswick County adopts the plan, then the plan is presented to the North Carolina Board of Transportation, and they adopt the plan. And then we have all our bases covered. So as far as what a CTP, short for Comprehensive Transportation Plan, is, a CTP is a 30, 25 to 30-year long-range transportation plan that covers across all modes of transportation. The purpose of the plan is to assess existing and future transportation needs, whether that might be identifying deficiencies in the network, also setting short and long-term priorities for transportation improvements locally and regionally across the county. This plan also provides an opportunity to align local visions and the regional vision for what our transportation network will need in future years. It is important to note that the CTP, the recommendations that it contains are conceptual in nature. They are not fiscally constrained. Those details happen later in the transportation planning process. The CTP is essentially the foundational document from which the RPO and its members and NCDOT pursues further, more in-depth study and funding opportunities. It's a carefully curated wish list, if you will, from which we then pull projects for future funding opportunities. For example, the prioritization process that DOT uses to score and fund projects. The CTP is the first place we look when we're trying to figure out, okay, what projects have been documented as important to our communities. The materials and the data that go into this plan are, well, comprehensive in nature. There's several project recommendations. There's also crash data, safety data. We have maps showing traffic trends, showing roads at their existing capacity, and evaluating in, you know, in 20 to 30 years, will the roads be over capacity or not. We also have maps containing Title VI data, which showcases the underserved communities across the county. The report itself is 54 pages. The appendix is 359 pages. Fantastic evening reading. The, so the process of the plan, it, this plan kicked off in late 2020, so it's been just over three years in the making. That's a two- to three-year timeline is normal for a CTP. We had a 63-member steering committee, ranging from local municipalities to the county, to different, I have to, oh, wow, there we go. We have a list of all of our steering committee members. Those that you see there in red are adopting agencies. So, you know, we see, obviously, Town of Oak Island is on there, several of the other municipalities. You'll note, this isn't all of the Brunswick County municipalities. Any of the municipalities contained in the GSAT's MPO, the GSAT's MPO adopts on behalf of all of their municipalities. And the municipalities that, in the northeast corner of the county, that are within the Wilmington MPO, they did not participate in this study. They had just completed their MTP, which is a slightly more condensed, fiscally constrained document. And so while they are not adopting, the Wilmington MPO did have staff that sat on the steering committee and ensured that our plans were in agreeance at the, at the planning boundaries. And then again, you see there, the RPOs on there, as well as the Board of Transportation. I'll go to the next slide. Does that work?
Do you have the?
Do I? I don't think so. I do not. That works. There we go. So the, as I said, the CTP started in late 2020. The steering committee, once formed, met twice a month for about nine or 10 months, and then from that point on, only met as needed, when there were draft items to review or decisions to be made. There's also an internal division steering committee at Division III, the NCDOT Division that covers Brunswick County. They also, there's a process, when we do CTPs, called the Inter-Agency Coordination Protocol, which just further expands the agencies that are kind of looped into the planning process. So some of those would include the NC Wildlife Resources Commission, the US Army Corps of Engineers, for example, various subject matter experts, to again, make sure that we're not only being comprehensive in our approach to transportation modes, but comprehensive in who we're involving in the planning process. There was a survey that was sent out to the public and got over 7,000 responses, which NCDOT has never had that many. That's the most that a survey for a CTP has gotten since we've been doing CTPs in this manner. And as a, I didn't mention this earlier, but as history, CTPs used to be done as thoroughfare plans, and they were more locally focused. And in the past 10 years or so, they've become county-wide type planning efforts. So great job to the Brunswick County residents and people who took that survey, because that's what we want. There were also some public involvement sessions, drop-in sessions, once we had a draft plan, draft recommendations. Those were last May. We had three of those, one in Calabash, one in Bolivia, and one in St. James, all of which were well-attended and gave us another round of public feedback. And then throughout the process, members of the steering committee were asked to, to report back to the agencies and organizations that they represented with updates as necessary. Thank you. So this is just a zoomed-in look from the steering committee. You know, I mentioned the names in red, were the adopting agencies. This, this is that list of who's adopting. We started the adoption process last month in January, kicked off our first presentation. That's carrying through this month and into next month for the local and county adoptions. The goal is to then have this for the Board of Transportation to consider adoption in April. Next slide, please. So this will be, this is in your packet, is in the slides that you have. That's a link to the CTP report. That's a link to the CTP report, the full report. The QR code also will work to access that full report. And now, at this point, I want to go through some of the main maps, which you have paper copies there in front of you, to outline or kind of give an overview of what's in the plan. So this first map you have is the Facility Types map, showing locations of project recommendations, not broken up into the shorter segments and lists that you also have attached to your maps, but just showing the corridors. There are one hundred and seventy-six project recommendations across the modes contained in this plan. And as far as the Facility Types map, what, what this is meant to show is, Facility Types show control of access, for example, the function of the roadway, whether or not there would be traffic signals, for example. So when you look in on there, for example, the, the difference between an expressway and a boulevard, and you see that NC two-eleven is recommended as a boulevard, they're both multilane divided. The control of access could still be similar, one of the differences being, on a boulevard, you have traffic lights, and on an expressway, you do not. And as you know, there are a couple of traffic lights on NC two-eleven. And so that's what, that's the purpose of, of this map. And then the next map, thank you, is the highway recommendations. And these projects are both numbered and color-coded. The number references the project lists that's in, in your packet behind the maps. And then the color is, is the type of project. So for example, all the projects in red are meant to address congestion in some way. Congestion and mobility, these could be projects to widen the roadway, to add lanes, for example, to increase the capacity. Anything you see there in dark blue is more of an access management-type project, so controlling turning movements, for example. Anything in light blue, when we say modernization, those are geometry improvements, such as taking a sharper curve and trying to smooth that out, round that out, so that it's safer. Or it could be increasing the width of the lanes. So you might have a two-lane road that stays a two-lane road, but, you know, the lanes might be widened from ten-foot lanes to twelve-foot lanes, for example. And then various other projects that, that might be for safety reasons or for some other reason. And again, the, the project numbers are referenced and the lists that you have behind the maps. Thank you. The next map is the Public Transportation and Rail Map. In Brunswick County, we have the Brunswick Transit System, which is the, the Regional Transit Authority, which operates as a demand-response service. There is a, a recommendation in the plan, and the county and BTS has had conversations of trying to accommodate seasonal traffic with a series of park-and-ride shuttles. It's important to note that this, again, is conceptual in nature, and is in the very early stages of any talks of this happening. You have, on the map there, some of the proposed locations. Those would be in communities like Oak Island, Holden Beach, Oceanale Beach, Sunset Beach. There, there's not a fixed location for this. Any further study or conversations about this would have to be had with the county and the municipality and the transit system to, to make those work. And we even had an introductory conversation about this last fall, actually. But that, that's the only transit recommended, or public transportation recommendation in this map. And there's only one rail project that's recommended, and that's up at the, in the top corner of the county, the Carolina Lines, the RJCS line, which is a white-volt Malmo connector, and that project is being proposed for re-establishment for strategic economic development opportunities to fill a, a link in the, in the network. The last set of maps I have for you are the bicycle and pedestrian maps. This, this, these maps are a combination of previous CTPs, local plans, and other regional plans, such as the Cape Fear Regional Bike Plan, or the East Coast Greenway Feasibility Study, kind of pulling from all of those sources in, into this, into this bicycle and pedestrian map. Again, the same thing, the projects are color-coded and numbered, so adding bike lanes, you have them there in yellow. The dark yellow would be multi-use path, various pedestrian improvements, sidewalks, for example, in dark blue. And then the, a note on the, the green, we go, one more slide, we zoom in to a map and set here for Oak Island. All of these projects in the, in the green color are consistent with project recommendations found in the Oak Island Bicycle Plan. And that's the, that's the purpose of, again, pooling all of that into the, to the CTP to kind of give this central planning document that we use when pursuing transportation improvements. Next slide, please. So as far as, again, so basically to, to remind you, the, the process that we're on, we're seeking local adoptions. We've had several presentations the past few weeks. Some of my colleagues are, are presenting to the Town of Bolivia tonight, for example. We've been offering two options for municipalities when seeking adoption. One would be if you so chose to adopt the plan this evening, or to take a, a month or however long to review the contents of the plan, come up with any questions if you have any, and I can come back and, and hopefully answer those questions and seek adoption at that time. But at this point, I will pause. The only other slide is my contact information, which you already have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel.
Sam, a notice on here, and I did go to your, I did go to your summary and your appendix to look at some of that information today, and I found a sheet on there. It's a highway analysis summary. It struck me, it kind of scared me, actually, key highway capacity deficiencies for the Brunswick County CTP. We talk about areas like NC one-thirty-three, NC two-eleven, Highway seventeen, NC eighty-seven, and the comment is that they're either already over capacity or near capacity. That concerns me. If we have a major storm and require evacuation, if we have an incident at the power plant and require evacuation, how are these roads going to handle? All of us.
I understand, and I, I agree with your concern. That's why those have been the major corridors that we submit for projects to DOT every two or three years, when we get that window for funding, because that's, at the RPO, that's equally concerned of ours, is we have a lot of people down here.
Thank you.
I'll just make a note quickly. There have been active conversations on the board to try to accelerate what we call Midway, nine oh six, because that is being viewed now as a key transportation artery for, for evacuation purposes, rather than just relying on one-thirty-three and two-eleven. So, we are trying to, excuse the pun, step on the gas for Midway, so we'll see. And I would just quickly like to show, I hope you all were excited about all the dark green on the island, as bicycle and pedestrian projects and work is, is in our future. And you'll notice many projects on the list in the back of your handout as well, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's the concern, is there are many more projects than we have available funding. And when you have a design sequence that doesn't have any fiscal boundaries, you throw things at the wall, but the capacity of the highway, the need for public transportation are going to grow exponentially as we grow. And so this, this list, as interesting as it is, needs to be winnowed down. And as you point out, the whole process of submitting for and hoping you get two projects funded is inadequate to the potential needs of Brunswick County, and probably, I would argue, North Carolina. But there's not much we can do about it. Thank you for all the wonderful designs, a lot of Oak Island-related potential projects there.
That was the participation we got, so that, I, I don't take credit for that.
At this point, I just want to say, thank you for your information. Thank you for getting Councilman Martin on your board. And, Mr. Martin, thank you for bringing back information to us. We're well informed. Thank you all.
So the, the roads that Councilman Carter referenced, so, you know, with respect to they're already over capacity at this point, I mean, kind of help draw a picture for us, like, what are you hearing? What level of concern? Should there be some type of a catastrophe? Is that getting the attention that you believe it should be getting? Or might there be an opportunity for us to push just a little bit harder on that?
I think there's, there's always an opportunity, in my opinion, to, to push a little more. I know that on the NC DOT Work Group, that reevaluates the scoring process for that prioritization process each, each round, factoring in resilience, and so, so, you know, climate concerns, evacuation concerns, that's one of the next topics that we're looking on how to quantify to improve the scoring system, specifically for areas like this, where that would be a critical component, that would help boost the, the importance and the priority of, of those projects. So that, that's one thing I can point to, that we, we don't have an answer for that yet, but that's, that's where we need some more push.
And lastly, on the two-eleven widening, if you can take out your crystal ball for a minute and, you know, set the, an ETA as to when we can expect that project to wrap up, what have you been hearing?
The section that's currently under construction?
Correct.
I, I know that I have notes on there somewhere from the, from the Division Engineer. I don't remember the percentage of how far along in, in the construction that they are. So I, I don't want to misspeak, but that's something that I can, I can get tomorrow, as far as what, what the update is on where the percentage is, but.
I just want to add that Councilman Martin was appointed by the mayor's to a two-year full-time seat last month, so we appreciate all that you do, Mark, in representing it so well.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the mayor's support in that effort.
Any other questions for Mr. Boswell?
No, but thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Sam, while you're leaving, I hope you know we got you in early.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I think he's experienced some wait time before.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from the Environmental Advisory Committee, which has been, has been withdrawn, so we'll move on to adjustment and approval of the agenda. Are there any changes recommended by counsel? Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. And with that, we move on to public, public comment. And just a reminder to please state your name. I see you got up there. An address before addressing counsel, and everyone will have three minutes, so.
Mark Dolak.
Good afternoon, counsel, mayor. Thank you guys for letting me speak. My name is Mark Dolak, one-two-three, Northeast Seventy-first Street. I'm here today to discuss the town parking decals and why we need to have them, not just for this year, but also for years to come. This is one thing I ran on when I was running for town council, is that we need to have paid parking and move everything from auto. Even when we do that, we need to continue to have the town council, the town decals for us residents. I know that something like a small window sticker may seem silly, but to many of the residents, these provide a sense of belonging, a sense of ownership. Like Oak Island, this is our town. Most of you, or all of you, have come from somewhere else. Something drew you to Oak Island. For most, it's that we are still a small beach town, where you know the residents. We go to our local restaurants, to the stores, you run into people you know. You may walk into a place and half the patrons know you. You park next to someone, you see that little decal, and you know they're one of you. That is what Oak Island is. It's that sense of community, it's that small-town feel, and when you start making changes, even little changes, like no longer providing us those decals, you slowly chisel away, little by little, the small things that make Oak Island wonderful. The small details that you change, that are, the small details that change the way you feel, that feel that we all wanted to come when we came here. My wife recently showed me something on Oak Island Locals on Facebook. It was someone's artwork with all the passes, passes from past years, and I thought, see how proud people are to call Oak Island home. So, please don't chisel away the little things, because eventually, larger changes will come, and the old, small-town Oak Island feel that we all love will disappear. I ask you to reflect on what made you come to Oak Island. Go back to how you felt then. Go back to that first walk on the beach, that first summer concert in the park, first time getting invited to a neighbor's house for a drink, and remember that sense of community, that sense of belonging. Don't change something that will take that feel away, even if it's just something silly like a little, little window decal for our carts in our cars. So I know you guys were discussing that today. Also, please do your research on the hotel. Me sitting there for five minutes, pulled up all of architecture at the bottom, Hampton Inn, Hilton, Days Inn, all those on their website, so just do your research on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Baker.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Oak Island Town Council. My name is Glenn Baker, and I live on one-ten Northeast Sixteenth Street. I stand today before you with a proposal that speaks to the heart of our community's values and aspirations. As we deliberate on a crucial decision of hiring a town manager, I urge us to consider the immense benefits of looking within our town for this pivotal role. Oak Island is not just a place on the map. It is a vibrant community, a tapestry woven from the threads of shared experiences, cherished memories, and a profound sense of unity. As we chart the course of our town's future, we must find a leader who not only comprehends the intricacies of our community, but also shares our vision for its prosperity. There are compelling reasons why we should first look within our town to hire a town manager. Firstly, an internal candidate brings with them a profound familiarity with our community, the pulse that beats with, through our streets, the dreams that dance in our hearts. They understand our culture, values, and unique characteristics, which are the bedrock of our identity. Secondly, internal candidates often boast established relationships with local stakeholders, town council members, government officials, business leaders, and community organizations. These existing connections can foster smoother collaboration, enabling us to navigate challenges and seize opportunities with greater agility and unity. Please don't worry about the optics of hiring somebody from within. First, there is a viable, if there's a viable candidate internally, it could possibly save thousands of tax dollars. I don't know how much a search firm costs, but if we go first to look within to see if there's a viable candidate before we spend the fifty thousand dollars, why not do it? We're not losing anything. Moreover, from within our town is deeply committed to our community's well-being and success. They are already invested in our journey, and their dedication and passion for serving the interests of our residents are unwavering. By selecting a town manager from within our ranks, we demonstrate our support for local talent and ensure a seamless transition, reducing the time and resources needed for onboarding and training. This promotes continuity and stability in leadership, reassuring our residents that their concerns and priorities remain at the forefront of our agenda. Ultimately, choosing a town manager from within our community is a testament to our belief in the strength, resilience, and potential right here in Oak Island. It's a decision rooted in our commitment to fostering collaboration, building trust, and empowering our residents to shape their destiny. As we embark on this journey, let us remember that the true essence of Oak Island lies not just in its breathtaking views or its vibrant amenities, but in the spirit of its people. The spirit that binds us together as one community, united in our The spirit that binds us together as one community, united in our quest for a brighter future. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Paul Dubay?
Paul Dubay, 1105 East Oak Island Drive. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Later in the agenda, under new business, you'll be asked to pass a budget amendment for the repair and resurfacing of all the racket courts, in addition, the repurposing of two of the tennis courts into six new pickleball courts. The Recreation Advisory Board is recommending that you pass this budget amendment. Pickleball, for years running now, is the fastest-growing sport in the United States. We are also seeing this growth here on the island. It has become commonplace during the summer months that there are more people waiting to play pickleball than we have courts for. You passed this past summer a paddle rack system that has really helped with determining who plays next when the courts are full. More courts will also go a long way in helping. Right now, the contractor has us on their schedule for sometime in April to get started. By adding the repurposing of the two tennis courts to six new pickleball courts, to their scope of work now would be fiscally responsible, would be the fiscally responsible thing to do. One mobilization and one demobilization in lieu of spreading this work out over two fiscal years. We thank you for your support.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the list.
Excellent. Moving along, council reports. If you don't mind, colleagues, I'll begin. This week has been, or this month, has been quite busy. This week, we had a half-day meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to discuss the 50-year coastal storm risk management project. So, with staff, Mr. Craft, sorry, I had a blank, and myself, we were able to participate in exercises that helped to provide input to this 50-year plan. The public will also have an opportunity to participate and provide input on the evening of February 21st, beginning at 6:00. And there will also be virtual opportunities to participate as well, and the Corps and the town will publicize that information prior to the meeting. So, this is the next steps, having to do with our ability to work with the Corps on a 50-50 partnership, if you remember conversations with previous meetings, on this study, and is a step in the direction for what is termed a federal beach, which is an important designation for Oak Island in that they, we will have, if, and I'll be optimistic, when funded, we will have support for long-range plans for the, and ongoing plans for the restoration, and nourishment of the beach will relieve Oak Island from some of that burden. So, I encourage any and all to participate on the 21st. It should be an interesting meeting. The Council of Governments also sponsored a mayor's meeting to hear from Senator Raybon, Senator Eiler, I'm sorry, Representative Eiler and Representative Miller regarding the short-session legislative agenda. And it was also an opportunity for the mayors to sign on to a letter opposing, it was a letter to the Insurance Commissioner, Causy, in opposition to the proposed insurance increase. And that was something that the council also provided a letter to Commissioner Causy, objecting to that as well. So, I think you've heard Mr. Causy speak to that, or Commissioner Causy speak to that recently, so we were part of that objection. Tomorrow will be a local mayor's meeting that's held monthly, and this is an opportunity for local mayors to discuss shared issues and keep each other updated. I found them particularly valuable. But probably, the most important item I have to report to you tonight is on the town manager search plan. We had a retreat earlier this month. Council identified the search as our number-one priority among a number of priorities discussed. So far, we have composed a plan for the search and transition. It's a fairly detailed plan. It is a large deliverable that council has tackled, starting ultimately in mid-January. Later tonight, we'll consider an RFP for a search firm. Bill will introduce that. Terry will talk about listening sessions for the public, and the listening sessions will be important to inform the development of a profile for the town manager we ultimately seek. And those listening sessions are an opportunity for many of you to come and participate in exercises and provide your input. So, again, I encourage you all to participate. We've also developed a, the beginnings of that profile during our retreat, and from that, we'll develop a draft job description and ready to have that once a contract with a search firm is determined. So, with that, I'm going to pass this to Councilman Bach to talk about the transition plan that he's leading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a moment of privilege. For those of you who may be familiar with Moffett Nichols, our engineering group, sadly, Mr. Sam Morrison, one of the lead engineers, perished in an aquatic accident. And I would ask the manager during your administrative report, what it is that we can do to express our condolences to his family, what has been our past practice in this sort of unfortunate affair. As the mayor indicated, and I think many of you already know, the search process involves the interplay of lots of complicated elements. The selection of a search firm, creation of a profile, public input, but one of the more important things that doesn't get a lot of the front-end exposure is the transition plan. And I'm happy to be working with Councilman Chulo and my colleague, Councilman Martin, in developing that. And if I had to shorthand that process, I would say it is ultimately about knowledge transfer. It's about enabling the next manager, he or she, to come in and touch the controls immediately and save time in the acclimation process. So, we have identified five critical areas to start the transition data collection, record collection, briefing, finance, personnel, public safety, major projects, and key contacts. So, that's where we're beginning. And I'm going to give my colleague, Councilman Chulo, a minute or two to talk about some of the things that we are currently working with.
Thank you, Councilman Bach. When we think about some of the projects we have going on in town, when we started talking, Councilman Martin, Bach, and myself, not in the same room, because that'd be a violation of the open meetings law, but through emails and phone calls and whatnot. And, you know, we started with four or five projects that expanded it to 10, expanded it to, I think, 18 or 19. So, we're going to sit down with Mr. Kelly and Ms. Adams this week, and start going over some of those projects. And some of the projects we came up with ranges from things that all of us are well-aware of, near and dear to our hearts, like beach nourishment and paid parking, street paving, sidewalks and crosswalks, Williamson Track, Pine Forest, you know, what's going on with these projects? What's the status? Who are the key contacts? What should we know? A, and B, our goal is to not give the new town manager, you know, 83 bankers' boxes worth of emails and paper, is to see what we can help with from a thought partnership, is coming up with the digital storage files, to make it much easier for this individual. So, we're excited for the opportunity to work on this transition plan, for our learning, first and foremost, secondarily, but first and foremost is for the new town manager. I want to take a second, if I could, go completely off-topic, though, and I want to talk about a subject that's near and dear to my heart, which is code enforcement. We have had a number, and I completely lost that, there we go. We've had a number of situations in recent years that it just seems that we just cannot get rectified. You know, the vast majority of homeowners here on Oak Island take great pride in their property, respect their neighbors and our community. Unfortunately, there are a small handful of homeowners who apparently do not care what their property looks like, and this disregard has negatively impacted the quality of life and home values of their neighbors and our community. We have a list of 43 homeowners who have been cited for enforcement violations and contacted by our town staff anywhere between three and 10 times, and unfortunately, they've chosen that to ignore that as the best path forward. So, two of those have been given to our town attorney, who has filed that in court, to move that forward. So, there's a lot more on the list, and staff and council will work very closely with Mr. Eads to prioritize further those legal actions on the remaining cases. I'd like to tell you I can get this solved with council in the next month, but I certainly can't do that. But if we're having this conversation a year from now, I accept accountability for this failure. With council support, we will have a complainant come into our March council meeting to share his five-year history of filing enforcement complaints for a neighbor in Oak Island, who has turned his property into a virtual landfill with junk cars, piles of dirt, abandoned construction equipment, scrap materials, and seemingly does not care about his property or his neighbors. The complainant is considering selling his home due to this frustration, but he knows the value of his home has been negatively impacted by potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars due to his neighbor's actions. He's looking to this council to help him get, to help him get this neighbor to clean up his property. I know Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kirkland are working on a new plan, and we're excited to move this forward. Thank you to all.
Mr. Martin, is there anything you, do you want to give your report and provide any input to the transition plan?
I can certainly give my report quickly. And at this time, as Councilman Bach and Chula mentioned, we're aggressively pursuing just the first part of the transition plan. I don't want to belabor the topic anymore. I think that they've covered it well enough, and we're hard at work, so just trust us on that. So, my report tonight is actually a thank you, an applause, a round of applause, a standing ovation, I call it. Some of you may not be aware, my wife suffered a severe leg injury on January 20th and required hospitalization and surgery, and she was quickly discharged from the hospital just a few days post-op. And our instructions were, she must remain immobilized, and she's non-weight-bearing. And so, my wife and I struggled to figure out, how in the heck are we going to get into our house? Our house is on pilings here in Oak Island. And so, we were fortunate enough that the courageous and thoughtful people of the Oak Island Fire Department came to our aid, and they have this amazing device called a stair chair, I think is what it's called. Lee, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And I'd never seen a stair chair, but apparently, they do this every day in Oak Island, and I never knew it. So, I just want to say publicly, thank you to the Oak Island Fire Department, the assets that we equipped them with, the care and kindness that those people showed, my wife, as they assist her in and out of the house. And it wasn't just once. We've had to call upon them again, because now, physical therapy starts, and we still got to figure out a way to get out of the house. So, unless anybody knows how to install an exterior elevator like really quick and really cheap, give me a call. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to the Oak Island Fire Department for all you do, and for the guys that are showing up to help us out. We couldn't do it without them, so thank you.
And we're pleased to hear that she's doing better incrementally.
She is. She's, every day, making little steps, so we're making progress.
Excellent. Good to hear. Mr. Craft, do you want to go next?
I'd be happy to.
I know we talk about the RFP later in detail, but offer whatever comments you like.
That's fine. It's tough when you go forth, everybody already said all the stuff I had written down. Army Corps of Engineers, once that comes to fruition, that's going to be very good, our relationship with them, for the people of Oak Island. I'm really excited about that, and hopefully, that becomes a reality. The mayor, Councilwoman Cartner, and myself have had numerous meetings on step one on what we do pursuing a town manager, and the logistics and how we go about doing it, and we've had phone calls, text messages, in-person meetings, compromised, agreed, came up with some pretty good stuff, and we'll talk about that later. Nobody has said the Parks and Rec is putting on the Mardi Gras Parade, March 24th. That's a hoot. Be sure to be there with all the festivities at Middleton Park. And the only other thing I say on a lighter note, go enjoy the sunsets. We live in paradise.
Thank you, Bill.
So, I'm not sure if you want me to do the listening thing, ask my board reporter, if I get to give a board report as well.
Oh, sure. Both, all of them.
Okay, so, for my board report, I'll be brief. The mayor mentioned that we've been busy for the last month, and that is no understatement. Everybody up here who you've elected to represent you has been working very hard on the town's behalf to get the town manager search kicked off. And sometimes, we get so busy that we forget to actually enjoy where we live, so I just wanted to share with you that on Saturday night, I had the opportunity to go to one of our local establishments. There was a favorite band playing. There were multiple bands playing around town at different venues that night. I know folks were going to multiple places. And it occurred to me while I was there, I just, you know, I thought, I really love Oak Island. It's a local place. People were hanging out together, just talking, no strangers, everybody talking to everybody. So, I encourage you to get out, go to our local places, and just enjoy the folks that we live here with and the town that we live in.
And you want to talk about the listening session?
So, now, let's talk about the listening session. As Mr. Craft mentioned, the mayor and he and I are working on what we call the search process versus what our other colleagues are working on, the transition process. And one of the things that, I think everybody knows that the council's charged with hiring the new town manager, and so, we believe that input from various stakeholders in our community is important in crafting this new profile that you've heard about. Who are we looking for? What are the characteristics that we're looking for in a new town manager? And one way that we've identified to do that is by something called a listening session. Really, what a listening session is, is kind of like a focus group or an input session. And if you saw yesterday's edition of The Current as it came out, this was mentioned in the newsletter. We'll be seeking to obtain specific information and ideas from a target audience, and our target audiences here are our citizens, our business owners, and our staff. So, we've scheduled several of these. I can give you the dates, but I would encourage you to go check The Current. On Wednesday, September 28th, we'll have three sessions. They're about an hour and a half long, different dayparts, so that hopefully, folks can, did I say September? I'm sorry, February. Trying to get us there before we get there. February 28th, three sessions, and then again, on March 2nd, two sessions. We will have a separate day for just staff members to come and participate. We're going to meet in this room. Town council chambers will be set up with tables and chairs. We expect to be able to accommodate eight... We expect to be able to accommodate 80 participants at a time, and thanks to the graciousness of the chief, we'll be able to deal with overflow if we have more than 80 people, because we don't want to turn folks around. I'll tell you, this is a facilitated, it's a facilitated session. You'll be introduced to the session and how it works. There will be specific questions that you will work on, on your own independently, and then you'll talk about it as a table, and then your table will report out, so that everybody here gets to hear what everybody else is saying. There's one point that I do want to make about this, and this is really important for all of us. These listening sessions are not gripe sessions. We're not gonna complain about where we might be, or what we might have done, or what might have happened in the past. These are sessions to hear, where do we want to go? What do we want Oak Island to be? And who do we need to help lead us to get there? So, I encourage you to look for the information in the Current. I think that Mr. Emery is going to try to post it some other areas, like the Facebook page, things like that, but please, try to find a space on your calendar for one of the sessions, and come, come let us hear from you. Thank you.
And so, do these require pre-registration?
No, no pre-registration is required. As I said, we're going to be able to accommodate 80 people at a session. Right now, we have five sessions scheduled. If we need to do more sessions, we will do more sessions, and thanks to the chief and the use of his space, we'll try to accommodate any overflow for people who show up.
Thank you very much, and thank you, council. I'm sorry.
Lisa.
I just wanted you, would you note for the record, you do not expect a quorum of council to attend?
That's correct, and Mr. Emery mentioned that in the news blast, this is not, these are not formal council meetings. Council members in general will not be participating. They're certainly welcome to attend and observe, but these will be facilitated meetings and not an official council meeting. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that reminder.
Thank you, council, for your reports. As you can see, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, and all of these efforts are on your behalf. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have three town council minutes, the last of which is our January retreat. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Committee appointments. Wait, so I'm going to turn this over to you for a process. So, the first is consideration of appointment to the planning board. There is one unexpired term ending August 2025. There's also, we've had a recent resignation, and that position has been advertised, and council has the option to do one of two things, to have, to wait for that session to close and entertain the candidates that apply, given the ones that are currently, have submitted applications for the 2025 position, or we can select to choose one from the, from among the applicants and fill that position tonight. So, we'll start with the first vote for the position that expires ending August 2025. There are three candidates, Dural Gilbert, Frank Giordano, and Mark Spicer. So, we've got, everyone have their forms?
Madam Mayor, are we also voting on the Board of Adjustment since it's on this sheet as well? Will they be handed back to us?
That's next. Do we want to do that now?
Yes, if you'll do both votes, since it's on the one sheet.
Okay, so, that's 2.3, consideration for par three.
Try to save some papers below it.
Counsel, please remember to sign your ballots.
I get another piece of paper, too. Also choose. Yeah. Do I have another piece of paper?
Yeah. Go do the next part.
Yes. Thank you.
Maybe you started out angry.
Angry.
Oh.
Good, thanks.
Let me make a motion to adjourn this.
Okay, with three votes from councilmember Bach, Kraft, and Martin were for Dural Gilbert, and there were two votes from councilmember Carter and Chula for Mark Spicer, and then there were five votes for Sue Stewart as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment.
So, congratulations to Mr. Gilbert and to Sue Stewart for their appointments. We'll now, and council, to decide your preference.
I'll make a motion to vote for the remaining member on the planning board.
Second. The planning board has a formidable task ahead of them, and there is a real sense of urgency that we move forward, and we have advertised, we have qualified candidates, so I think we should make that decision. So, I will second your motion, Mr. Kraft.
All in favor? All opposed? Four to one. So, how would you like them to vote for this next one? Do you just get them back there?
I prepared another ballot, just in case.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sure.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to clarify, this vote is for the unexpired term, which ends in August 24th, just so we're clear.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Martin cast a vote for Mr. Giordano, and the other four members cast a vote for Mark Spicer.
Congratulations, Mr. Spicer. Thank you all for your future service. We appreciate all that our committees and boards do. Next on the agenda is consideration of removing a member from the par three committee, and Madam Clerk, I'll let you explain.
Yes, thank you. In the committee policy that council adopted last year, there is a section that deals with absences, specifically unexcused absences. Unfortunately, there is a member, Mr. Heffernan, who has not been attending the par three committee meetings, and has also not been responsive to communications from the chairman, and she has indicated that to me in writing.
So, is there a motion for action on this item?
I'll make a motion to remove Mr. Hefferman from the par three committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Administrative reports. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am. Rick Patterson is going to get up for a second and talk about some of the Pine Forest items.
So, I just want to give a brief, we've had some complaints back and forth, and I just want to give a little brief history on the Pine Forest, and then take any questions you'd have, if that's okay. So, the Pine Forest, Pine Forest development is in phase one of two planned phases. Phase one, the lake's approximately 50% built out, or is permitted at this time for new homes. Pine Forest is a typical medium-low-density residential development utilizing wet ponds to capture and control sedimentation and erosion during construction and stormwater after completion. Wet ponds are an approved sediment control measure recognized by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Protection. The capacity of these wet ponds can be reduced by excessive sedimentation into those during construction. With that being noted, these are designed for so much sedimentation during construction, and at this stage of the development of Pine Forest, which actually has been going on now for about five years total, so we've been working with them for a long time, it's the developer's responsibility to ensure the sediment and debris is not leaving their site. Additionally, builders working on the individual lots also sharing this responsibility to control the siltation leaving from their sites. We've not been, I've not noticed or been notified or been aware of any situations that Pine Forest has released any siltation beyond their borders. So, the siltation ponds are working properly. Any siltation should go into those ponds during construction. At this point in the development, these are not for recreational uses, these are for sediment erosion control. Once the development is completed, we will go back in, and we will have, before the HOA takes over that development and the maintenance, we will go back in and have those ponds surveyed, and the engineers check those to make sure that there's adequate storage before the HOA takes over in those ponds. Typically, at that point, once the HOA takes over, is when we'd look at a secondary recreational There are only two builders that currently work within Pine Forest, Truist and Bill Clark, building, constructing new homes. The Truist Builder Group has been issued 29 new building permits and currently have three new building permits pending. Bill Clark Homes has been issued 23 new home permits, for a total of 52 active permits and three pending new home developments. Out of the 52 active permits, 45 have been completed and seven are currently under construction. And I wanted to discuss a little bit about our interactions that we have. We've got two groups, we've got the developer and the builders. So, staff's had many, many interactions over the past five years, which is common and normal for this type of project. The staff interactions usually include onsite visits, modifications, discussing regulations, and providing technical information. The particular developer has been easy to reach and responsive to requests from staff. The developer was issued a violation in 2023 for excessive soil erosion runoff entering the siltation ponds, and for active sheet and reel erosion, wind erosion, from the grubbing and grading activities of lots that have not been developed on. That violation was $100 per day, per violation, or $200 total, resulting in a fine of about $2,200. Staff continues to work with the developer to resolve potential violations and reduce sediment erosion issues. Staff also interacts with the builders theirself. Zoning technicians and building inspectors provide most of the interaction with the two builders in the development. Staff's interactions with the builders normally occur when conducting inspections, code enforcement, investigating complaints, or evaluating conditions on site. Staff could physically be at Pine Forest daily, multiple times a day, weekly or bi-weekly, depending on the need. Staff estimated the two builders at Pine Forest have been issued approximately 10 stop-work orders, and additionally, staff reported that most of the builder violations are resolved within a day or two. So, this is a common occurrence on a daily basis during our construction. And in conclusion, we have to remember that the homes being purchased within the Pine Forest are actually in an active construction site. So, many of those homes could be surrounded on three sides with active development. So, and all the related construction traffic, workers, materials coming in, and though this is inconvenient for the current homeowners that's there, it's not illegal, and it's basically, it is the decision of the developer how they're going to handle internally what's going on in there. So, when we really get looking at some of this, since really no materials leaving the site, and many of these issues have been resolved, we continue to work on these, but most of the issues come, occur, or they don't occur, within the Pine Forest property, based on the developer's and builder's decision within their building unit. So, they're not enforceable environmental degradation issues, these are day-to-day issues. So, this is the part that we try to keep that relationship going, and try to make all parties as happy as we possibly can. We've had many conversations that maybe in the future, maybe you could do several things. You could section off sections and complete, say, that street before you sell any of the homes. Again, many of these are just suggestions, and I'm not sure we have a legal basis to stand on, to enforce that developer develop a certain way, as long as they're within Since this time, since just the last week or so, the developer has actively, so right now, we don't have an active HOA there, because the developers, and they haven't released that yet, but they have been holding, they've had an interim HOA, and they've been having routine meetings with those folks that represent the HOA that's there, and we've had good response, too, there. The builder's been transparent on the materials we're going from one point to the other, and they also provided us a list of, of a sequence of work that's occurring, and we did have an extremely hot summer, so it was extremely difficult for them to get some seedings done. Some of the simple things was simply stop mowing around the pond so much. The higher vegetation provides buffering for the, any material before it enters the ponds. They've done, they have a curb and gutter system where there's a curb along the edge of the road, and there's a gutter that goes in, everything goes into the ponds. They put barriers up there to stop the sediment erosion from entering that system, and they continue to routinely have meetings with the homeowners. So, we, I have reached out to several of the homeowners, and I've got positive responses. We do have copies of our correspondences back and forth, if any copies would be needed, but I'd like to try to answer any questions, if I could, from the council.
Thank you for that explanation, it was insightful. Counsel, do you have questions for Mr. Patterson?
Pine Forest was here at the last meeting, and I mentioned specifically that we had, in the past, had several residents come forward and complain. So, based on your report, there are no active complaints presently, correct?
That's correct.
That you're aware of?
That I'm aware of, that's correct.
And no violations that they've been cited for?
No, not at this current time, correct.
Mr. Patterson, you mentioned these meetings. Who's meeting with whom? Is it the developer meeting with the residents, or the builder with the residents, or everybody with the residents?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, it is an internal meeting that they're having.
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, it is an internal meeting that they're having, the developer, as well as some members from representing the interim HOA. And I think the developers, the two builders, are also there onsite when they have these meetings.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure the developer wasn't being a part of that because ultimately the buck stops with them, so.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson.
Want to have Ryan come up and give us, there's Ryan, give us an update on our big item again for this year?
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to first off by saying thank you for everybody's support and assistance in making last year's Sunset on Summer Music Festival a huge success. We wanted to provide you with a few updates on what's coming up at this year's event. We're set to host the SOS this year on Saturday, September the 7th, and we'll kick everything off at 12 o'clock PM that day and end everything around 8:00 with a conclusion of another great fireworks show that I think everybody really enjoyed last year. This year's main lineup will consist of Gary Louder and Smoking Hot, Chicago Rewired, which is a tribute to Chicago, and On the Border, a tribute to the Eagles to close it out. We're also looking to add a small, a smaller portable stage at the park that day with a few other bands that we'll have playing in between the change-ins and change-outs of the bands at our main stage as well, so we can kind of keep that crowd interaction going on at the same time. At this time, we already have about nine food vendors that are planning to attend this year. We're still looking to add a few more so we can make sure that everybody that's intending will have plenty of options to choose from while they're enjoying the event that day. We're also fixing to start reaching out to our local sponsors for the event to help with offsetting the cost with everything that goes with that event. And then while we're still, have many things to, to get done to, to prepare for this year's Sunset on Summer Music Festival, but we wanted to take this time to give everybody a glimpse of what's being planned for this year's Oak Island End of Summer Celebration this year. So just wanted to kind of give y'all an update on that right now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, in addition to the food vendors, are we also going to have the Beer Garden wine?
Yes, sir. We're looking to still have about the same amount that we had last year and everything. Yes, sir. We'll probably bring everything in a little closer in too, so.
And is that something that we're contemplating doing on for Friday night concert, having Beer Garden or?
Hasn't been really discussed on, on as far as the summer concert series themselves, and so we usually kind of keep that a little bit separate from this particular one because there is quite a bit of things that goes into one, serving alcohol at the events and everything, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
For clarification, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
And first, thank you for all the good stuff you do that make us, make Oak Island look good. People ask me all the time, do the sponsors and the vendors, is it a break even for the concerts on Friday night?
We try to make it, make it that way with the number of sponsorships that we pull in, because I know we have a budget set for those summer concert series. But we also, I try to reach out so that we break even at that, so everything offsets, so it's not, you know, everything kind of washes out at that point. But with the support from the local sponsors and from the town with those concert series has provided us those opportunities to be able to bring in bigger bands and big, bigger acts to the concert series to make that flourish like it has been. So we really appreciate everybody's support with that.
Excellent. Thank you for all you do. This is the concert series, and the Sunset on Summer Festival is, have been very well received, and, and we appreciate you and all of the rec department for putting that on.
We appreciate it. It's a, it's a team, teamwork to make everything happen for sure for the town, so appreciate everybody's support and assistance with everything that we were able to put on, so.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Every department gets to pitch in on that one, so it's, it's a big thing that we have. Just to give you some, a few other brief updates, we finally have got a vendor lined up for the cabana parking lot, the ADA parking lot back behind the cabanas, so we can get that project completed. I know Catherine's been wanting us to get that wrapped up because we have some money that's tied up in a grant that we need to get reimbursed on before that goes away. 20th Street, Scott's picking out color for the roof. We'll see what color he picks out. We'll keep that a secret until it gets put in place. But also, next month, we're going to be bringing back 9th Street to you. It was an original bid years ago. It was something we couldn't afford at that time. Then we had the vendor change out this past year, and the vendor that came in has offered a price that's actually lower than what it was before. And so the dollars that was basically set aside two to three years ago, we'll need to add some to it, but I, I think it's a doable thing now so we can go ahead and get that project knocked out as well while the vendor's here before he gets away from us. Councilman Buck brought up Sam Morrison. What council usually does is we, for immediate family of staff or a council member or something that passed away that served before, we usually have Rose contact them and we do whatever their family honors. If we send something to a hospice or to a cancer society or anything like that, that is what we usually do. After we got the call that Friday morning about what happened, we reached out to the family that day and offered anything that we could do to help them because Sam was just here the Wednesday before at the meeting with us. So it was sort of a tragic thing that we had happen. So what they've asked us to do is just give to the youth sports society or teams that are in your own communities and give that away. So we'll probably be making a donation to the Dixie U baseball, softball here that's local in his honor.
Thank you very much for that.
And that's my report.
Thank you. At this time, I think we'll take a 10-minute break.
If I could just give a quick one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget you, and I'm so sorry.
Following up on Councilman Coolio's comments regarding right-of-way enforcement, I just wanted to give a few more details on that. According to our system, there were originally, and, and these numbers can change on a daily basis, but 49 cases, staff took a fresh look at those. 16 of those cases have already been resolved. Seven lawsuits have already been filed, including regarding the property that the gentleman's going to come speak on next month, which leaves a remaining outstanding number of existing violations to be, as of today, 26. We believe we can file suits on all of those if they don't otherwise come into compliance by April 1st unless council directs otherwise. That will be the plan. Any questions?
We understand you're working with Mr. Kirkland on a process?
Yes, ma'am. And this was the first, some of this, you know, there's been some change in personnel. I will say Mr. Kirkland and his staff are doing a great job. Like I said, they've already cleaned out 16 of the original 49 in the system, and that was done by way of a reinspection. But the, the new process would be to get fresh evidence, fresh pictures on everything to accompany letters to the homeowners and ultimately lawsuits and evidence in the lawsuits.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you, ma'am.
Again, I'm sorry. Now, we will take a 10-minute break. Be back, I guess it's 8:20. Be back, no, later than 8:30, please. We are back from the break, and we will continue with Old Business. The first on the agenda under Old Business is a discussion for proposal to allow gravel in the towns right-of-way for parking. Matt, does this go to you?
Me?
That was Bill's thing.
Go ahead, Bill.
Me.
Councilman Craft.
I wrote down some stuff. So many topics have different viewpoints, and this is one of those. I want us to kick around some ideas. At one time, we had no right-of-way parking because we were starting paid parking. So we took away right-of-way parking. We, that made sense. And then we said, if anything comes up, we might have to tweak as we go. A couple months after we instituted no right-of-way parking, we decided, well, it might be okay to have right-of-way parking north of Oak Island Drive. So we came back and we put right-of-way parking north of Oak Island Drive, but we didn't make any allowances for people putting gravel in their, in their driveways. So if you look around town, in some right-of-ways throughout town, there's gravel. And in some right-of-ways throughout town, there's not gravel, and if they put gravel down tomorrow, they're in violation. So, and I'm big on a softer, gentler town and try to say yes whenever we can say yes. So I've had a couple people tell me, well, Bill, if you have, allow people to put gravel in front of their yards north of Oak Island Drive, and you don't allow them to do it south of Oak Island Drive, you're dividing the town. And good point, just like golf carts are allowed from 38th Street up, but not from 38th Street down. So we've already been down that road and, and it seems to work. Everybody in town knows that if the town needs to get to something under the right-of-way, that your gravel is going to be disturbed, your rose bushes is going to be disturbed, your dirt's going to be disturbed. And I know everybody has different opinions, and there's a lot out there, and I don't want to belabor everything at 8:35, but I would like for the planning board to consider this, address it, and make recommendations, thank you, Matt, make recommendations next month on the pros and cons of allowing gravel in the right-of-ways north of Oak Island Drive.
Give you?
If we're going to send it back to planning board, unless you've got something to, with that decision?
The, the particular ordinance that governs this is not in the UDO, and it's not directly related to development, so you don't even need to send it to planning board. You can if you want to, if you'd like for the planning board to develop something. But if the directive is for, if you want something developed, you don't have to send it to the planning board. You can direct Mr. Kelly and myself to work on something outside of that. But you can also send it to the planning board if you'd like them to, to comment and come up with something. Either way, I just didn't want you to think it had to go to the planning board.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that in mind, then, I was going to lay it out there and hear what people say, and I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to say on this issue.
Well, you know I have great affection for you, sir, but Mr. Kelly and I are the only remaining participants from the first right-of-way campaign, which taxed staff, which led to all sorts of tension with residents. You open Pandora's box, you reap what she has inside, because either we are going to enforce the right-of-way standards and not create new exemptions, or there are no right-of-way standards, do whatever you want. And so there's, it's, it's hard to navigate this area, and I hear what you're saying about, do we have a gravel standard, and maybe we should permit this, and then we're going to get into a kind of gravel, home wide, so on and so forth, and it will conjure up all of the other things. I, for one, would love a strategy to manage the right-of-way. And like the vegetation ordinance, which is coming next, where's the manpower to enforce this? Who's going to handle all of the pre-existing violations on my street, the street next to me, the next street? There's gravel installed, it's been there for, I've been here 17 years, it's been here for 17 years. Are we really going to take that on? Are we pulling out people's rose bushes? Are we taking down palm trees, not to mention ballards, fences? Or I could go down to Yacht Drive and find street ends which are turned into businesses, people have tables there? Careful what you, you wish for here. Very, very careful, because we have a lot of other things. This will be a huge distraction from my point of view. Now, if we had a strategy and laid it out, and it's, where's Matt? Codified in the ordinances, right? And we have a commitment to manpower, and we're going to do this, right? And there's a process? Okay. But that's a lot of preliminary work we don't have right now. So that's my concern, right?
I hear what you're saying.
I've been down this road, and it is going to be a tortured road.
But it's less enforcement going forward. Our code enforcement people won't be out trying to patrol the north side of Oak Island Drive. They're out now patrolling the north side of Oak Island Drive for violations. There won't be violations on the north side of Oak Island Drive.
Well, I, I can assure you that if you took a comprehensive look at the island, there are multiple violations all over the place, right? I don't want to add to that. That's, that's my point. I hear what you're saying. Again, I would welcome the strategy and the manpower and the commitment, and everyone up here, if we go down that road, needs to support the administration next, who is going to enforce this. And it will be a fight. We had a 45-minute discussion about bushes, which were in the right-of-way for 30 years, and we were trying to take them out, and that was just one case, right? So again, strategy, manpower, commitment, those things are in place, yes.
Any other comments from council?
Question. Rather than just giving blanket, Ms. Kelly, can you walk us through, what is the process if somebody wants to put gravel at the end of their driveway? What's the process that they have to follow? Step by step, please.
Yeah, I'll chime in on that a little bit. So Section 26-1 of the Code of Ordinances covers construction or other improvements within the streets right-of-way. And it basically says that if you're going to install on-street parking, that one, it needs to meet either NC DOT roadway design manual, which stipulates like the thickness of the materials that you use, or NC DOT, basically if you have a DOT spec that you're going to build your parking to, you need to, to meet that. And then you have to get a fully executed right-of-way encroachment agreement with the town. So basically what that is, is the, the citizen property owner is coming and asking the town for permission to put this into the right-of-way. Town council reviews right-of-way encroachments. It's not too dissimilar to if you're trying to ask your neighbor for easement for, you know, to use a little sliver of their property for something, you have to go ask the person, you know, for that type of permission. So those are really the only two things you need. You have to show that you meet a DOT road spec for whatever type of parking you're trying to put in. Now typically, we would send that over to Public Works because it's in the streets and street maintenance falls under them. And once they give us the okay, then it looks good and it meets their, the construction requirements, and then they'd come to council and ask for consideration of an encroachment agreement into the right-of-way.
Was there a cost associated with this process?
There's not a, not a town fee associated that I'm aware of, no, sir. We don't charge anything for someone who wants to.
A little more history to that, what Councilman Buck was referring to. The former council member is Charlie Blalock. He was in law enforcement for all those years, so he was looking at it as a public safety item. And so what he was always wanting to do was to keep, him and Councilman Wykoff was trying to keep either eight or 10 feet off the edge of pavement free for emergency access. Someone need to pull off the road, get a car off the road, broken down car, whatever it was. And the way they looked at things was, if we're allowing to put gravel into an area and park a car, then what was the difference of parking a boulder or planting a tree? Because the person can't move that tree, just like they can't move the car if the car is parked there. So what they looked at is tried to give us some kind of distance from the edge of pavement. And when the, there was one encroachment approved where the person had to move the cross ties in the right-of-way, I believe it was 11 inches to come into compliant with the measurement, and then that person was allowed to be able to keep the item within the right-of-way, and council granted that. But the, originally, when this was looked at, was for public safety. One of the things I talked to Councilman Craft about, if we look at putting gravel, are we looking at putting gravel from the edge of the pavement to the right-of-way? Or, excuse me, from the edge of the pavement to the person's property line? Or are we looking at a width, which sort of Councilman Buck referred back to? And do we want it on the edge of the pavement, or do we want it to put it near the property line and coming back? And those are the kind of things that Councilman Buck referred to. Once we start to look at this, we have to look at everything again. We did try this before, and we pretty much got shut down on it because we couldn't enforce it on every street, every block, every person. As soon as we did enforce it on one person, we'd get the hundred calls saying, well, why didn't you go after this person? And then every person that we contacted then rode down the street and took pictures of everybody else. So it was a conveyance that we got into that we couldn't handle. And sort of we came back to what Matt just read, that's why they put on the books. That's why they put on the books. But that is, is it the right way or the wrong way? That's totally up to council.
So the process is relatively simple, right? So they, somebody goes, they come down here to town hall, they get some information as to what the design needs to look like, what the materials need to be. They fill out a form and then it's submitted to council for a vote.
So they would go on DOT's webpage.
Okay.
They would download the manual or look at it online. Then they would come up with the design specs and everything that they say. They would come up with a drawing because that would have to be presented in the encroachment. They would hire or get whomever they wanted to, to fill out the encroachment paperwork. But that would be on the DOT site. Usually it is. Sometimes it's hard for even us to find because they move it. But the person would then submit that to the clerk. Clerk would put it on the agenda. And then they would present it to council and you would make your decision.
So can the average layman, Ms. Kelly, in your opinion, can they, are they able to fill out that encroachment form without having to hire an attorney?
The person that submitted it the first time, it was self-initiated. So they, they did it themselves. But they were, they were, they were not looking at parking. They were looking at trying to keep a vegetated garden still in the right-of-way. And they had railroad ties and they had field. And then they had to remove some of the field, lower it and, and come into compliance that way. But the council did allow them to keep the flower bed. Because they looked at it as public safety. It was far enough off the road to, to allow access.
So I'm hearing two things. One, although complicated, there is a way for people on the north side of Oak Island Drive to have gravel in their right-of-way. If they comply with the DOT paperwork, come to council and, and get permission.
Can I ask Matt, does it say north or south or is it just townwide?
It's townwide.
I, so that's one way. And the second thing I'm hearing discussed is that cars or trucks will be in the way. If they have right-of-way parking, if they're parking in dirt, they're, they're going to be in the way.
Correct.
So that's a non-issue. Right now, we're allowing people to park their cars or trucks. So we can take it, it doesn't have to be complicated. We can put language in there. Not your yacht, not your portable 96-foot basketball court that you can put a personal car, a certain sized truck is permissible in the gravel in the right-of-way. All, all I'm asking for is for people to think about being allowed to put gravel in as opposed to dirt and grass in. It's no change. I'm not asking for telephone poles and, and put basketball courts with a, in concrete there. And then softer, gentler. We drive around and we see the neighbor, we'll say Holly Street. Their neighbor to the left has gravel in their driveway, in front of their yard. And that particular person to the right has to jump through 75 hoops and, and be told no, that they can't put gravel in their driveway, in front of their house. I'd like to just get uniform where we can allow people to put gravel in their right-of-way, knowing that if the town needs to disturb that, it's at their cost. So it's.
That's why that choice is y'all's. We don't have to make it and whatever y'all decides what we enforce.
Yeah.
But we hear, we hear both sides. We hear that now that we're going to be able to do this, now we're allowing them to cut trees out of the right-of-way. I mean, there's all kinds of things, as you just said, that people can come back with and, and say, well, now we're doing this or now we're doing that. But at the end of the day, it's if you allow parking in the right-of-way, you allow parking in the right-of-way. Dirt, gravel, sand, oyster shells, grasses, whatever they plant or whatever they put there. And, and that's the way it is currently. And like you did say, there was somebody down the street may have the gravel that's already in place. We just had one person put piles of sand. So there is, they do look at all kinds of methods and they put the piles of sand because they didn't want nobody to park there. So it's totally up to council. But it's when we say that it's for parking and we allow it for 72 hours, it's hard for us to enforce. The longer you give somebody to park, the harder it is for us to be able, and the chief's gone, I think, but it, it makes it harder on us to be able to enforce the ordinance. I'm not saying change it, I'm just saying if you allow gravel and parking in those areas, then when they park there and we get the calls, that mean they're legal. Because they're not doing anything wrong.
All of a sudden, they're, they're getting to live as good as their neighbor.
And the, still, if they boat and trailer, the trailer has to be hooked up to the vehicle to park in the right-of-way. Can't be left by itself.
I didn't come here to, I didn't plan on asking for a vote tonight. So I just wanted to get it on the table, get everybody thinking about it. I'll call you for the next three weeks and pester the heck out of you and we'll see where we are. I'm good.
We moving on?
I'm, I can move on.
Can we, can we at least reach a consensus that it would be nice to get a fresh set of eyes on this topic? Since it has been some years past and maybe get Matt's perspective on pros and cons and, and, you know, good things and bad things. I'd like to see some more information on the, on the topic. If that's, if Matt has time to, to do that. I don't know if we should say bring it back next month, but let him on his timeframe, maybe develop a new point of view on this topic and present it to us. I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate Mr. Chulo, what you had to say. And I appreciate Mr. Bach sharing his thoughts. I mean, that's why we kick it around. Matt, if you could, and at your leisure, sir.
Yeah. I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions that develop. Basically what we're talking about here is the streetscape. You know, what do we want the street to look like on the side of it? And I've, there's lots of resources out there to help the town develop something like that. So I'll take a look at some things and, and come back to you as soon as I have something for you to look at. Okay? Great. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is consideration of implementing a resident parking decal program for next season. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am. I sort of got the, got this one here. So what the council gave us some direction, some things they'd like for us to look at and address. We have a paid parking program through Auto. Auto does our monitoring, our ticketing, our enforcement, collections and those kind of things during the hours from nine to five currently, during our parking season. The method that they use, they scan the tags, license tags to see if the person is compliant. They don't look at a decal and council during their discussions address that the decal and paid parking are two different topics. The decal is not utilized or read by the vendor. So that is something totally separate. And then they asked us to look at what it would cost to implement a decal program. So we started looking at some projections. We had different staff look at different numbers and different aspects. And then we had some questions about, are we going to do this year round or just during the season? When do we need to pick up? Auto start selling the passes? Do we need to wait two to three weeks? Do we need to wait a month before we will start issuing decals? So we had to start looking at some timeframes on what that would basically lay out and how we could do a program. We all know last year how it was inundated. Soon as he said we were selling passes, we saw what happened at town hall. This is the same thing that we experience when we do decals every two years, the first year that we do them. We have everybody coming in at first wanting their decals for the next two years to be able to place on their vehicles. So we were looking at staffing it that way. One person would be considered as full-time, but the hours would only be the 1,200 hours. And then we would have a part-time person to come in for the busy part of the days and to allow that person to take a lunch. And then the, we'd still have it covered where the people could still be getting their decals during the day. So we looked at some personnel things. We looked at the full-time would be the only one with a salary, the part-time wouldn't. And we looked at some of the rates that we were currently paying within these fields. And we came, like I said, we had projections of around $32,000 to pay for the staff, the inside staff is what we call, to be able to administer the decals. Then we look at outside staff. Council had asked Auto to give them a price to do monitoring from five o'clock in the afternoon to nine o'clock. And then also for a seasonal, what it would be if they did it off-season as well. So Jim provided that for us and we'll get that here in a minute. But we had to start looking, worked with the police department, what they would be looking at if they had to implement somebody. Not saying we'd use sworn officers, these would be non-s sworn staff. We'd have two people looking. And one would start on the east, one would go to west, they'd work in the middle. But we'd have two people on, working it. And when you come up to the hours of that, 732 hours for that, you come right around $25,000. Then we had to look at the miscellaneous item cost for that, for the enforcement. And we had to put a hat and a t-shirt on to identify the people. We've learned that we need to make sure we do that. Vehicles, we were looking at buying some used vehicles for the first year. So there'd be a cost the first year, but then after that it would be zero after that. Fuel maintenance, we contacted the garage for the vehicles to be able to provide that line item. Libability insurance, Catherine provided that for our insurance. Equipment, we asked Jim what we would need to be able to scan, just like he does, utilize the same program. Or will we need to invent something ourselves and we do the, look at the decal? We would write the ticket, we'd do the collection, we would do everything as we used to do. And then there would be a fee for Auto to provide the software if we did it on a monthly basis. And late, we had them, we'd use their equipment or their program to be able to administer the program. So you add all those together and it comes about $49,000. But you have to remember, you take out the vehicles, the first year was a 30, so you'll take that back out. So the total to do an inside and outside was about $107,000 altogether to administer the program. So we talked among everybody again and we started to say, see what Jim's numbers are. Jim provided the numbers to us. And council knows that Auto Connect offered a price of $50,000 to be able to monitor after hours. And they would utilize their scanning ability because if we go by what council had talked about before, once the person buys the permit from Auto, then Auto would send us some kind of receipt to be able to show that Councilman has bought them pass. And then we would issue the pass accordingly to what was purchased. So again, the decal and parking are two different things. Parking is read off the license tag. So Jim, again, would be just reading license tag, he wouldn't be looking for a decal. And that's the $50,000 that he turned in for that. So if we wanted to administer a town, or decals anyway, it'd be just the inside staff to do that. And that would be the $32,000 again. So you get to, with some sign modification saying that we're going to do it from resident spots from nine to five or all day, I should say, would be open and be monitored. You get to a price around $87,000. So if we're looking at doing that to administer the decals, we've talked about looking at doing, going back to hurricane stickers or decals. To administer that, administer that, we had talked about taking this one season off to not confuse or, or think people think that you did one or the other. And implement the hurricane decal next year into the program, lest council chooses to do it this year. But that way, at the tax bill time when it would go out, every resident would be mailed two stickers like we used to do. And then they would put it on the appropriate vehicles that they have. And that would way, it would keep, you know, people would have the decals staying there, town of Oak Island residents. And it means something to them and they would know that that car belongs here. Those kind of hurricane stickers were used for reentry before, years ago. So that'd be something that we look at again. But it's really up to council in what direction they would like for us to go. If you'd like towards the minister of decals or would you like for us to have Auto do the monitoring? Or really whichever way y'all would like for us to handle this.
Counsel? Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Kelly, the, the cost of if we have Auto enforce from five to nine and do not have parking decals, what is, is it $50,000, that's the absolute total cost?
Would you like to address that, sir?
Yes, sir, that's the cost for us to have people working evenings, monitoring all of the resident-only spaces for parking permits. That is the total cost for the, for the season, 2024 season, April 1st through the end of September.
So I'm going to ask you a very unfair question. So the, our current contract with you has a 50% discount for fines that are paid the same day, right? So they pay, they, they don't, they pay $25 instead of $50.
That is correct.
That's in the contract.
If it is paid within the same day, correct.
So using the data from last year's parking, that was about a $50,000 revenue based upon the, trust me, it was about $50,000. Now, would you be willing to lend a hand here and possibly do away with that 50% discount? So we could recover that $50,000 of revenue to offset the incremental $50,000 of revenue we'd be paying you for enforcement after hours?
That is not up to me. That is up to council. I made a recommendation that we use that 50% discount for same-day violation because it is very effective, especially early in a paid parking program, to make sure that people are compliant and pay their citations in a timely fashion. And we can avoid collections, which we're now actively busy with. So it is entirely up to council. If you want to eliminate that discount, that's fine. We have seen other towns in Brunswick, New Hanover, Bender County, move to that kind of discount as a competitive feature. Even though we've had it now for four years, other towns are now embracing it with other companies. So we are seeing that now as a competitive requirement to at least offer that capability. But again, it is up to you, well, the council, whether you want to, how you want to set the fines.
So if we did away with that discount, how would, in your professional opinion, how would that impact your collection rate? What might it go from what it is currently to whatever that new number?
We currently collect 80% of the fine, of the citations are paid within 30 days. Industry average is closer to 60%. And that's probably where we would go. And that's just judging from what we see out in the industry.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim, 378 or so town parking spots. I'm going by memory.
I have to defer to Scott, but I think it's about 300, it was.
280 now trying to get to 370?
Yeah, 280 was the number that I remember. Although I know council back in December asked Scott to try to find up to 400.
All I'm trying to get at is manpower-wise, what would that require from you from five to nine P M. for 280 or 350?
It's not a matter of number of spaces. It's a matter of how long the island is and us having to pull into every parking lot and scan each tag. From five to nine, I'm hopeful that we'll have our little scanners and can just, you know, crank through them. The biggest impact to us is the evening hours and finding people. And we recognize we have to pay them more to work evenings. It's like second shift premiums. So that's part of what has drove that 50,000 number. But I, you know, you know, seriously, I'm probably looking at about four people that I have to hire that will rotate through the town, driving up and back.
One last question. I want very hard to agree with what Councilman Chulo said. He, he fought real hard for me a while ago on my gravel. So I want to try very hard to be in agreement with him. But did I hear you say that if we did go to $50 and not $25, that we would lose money or did?
We would get fewer payments upfront that would drive more to collections. When we go to collections, then you lose money. Effectively then, the collections takes 30% off the top. I take 30% of what's left over and you get the balance.
Uh, has your experience shown you the second year, and we're also proud of our revenue for the first year, has your experience showed a a better revenue for the second year? Or is there no barometers?
I've seen both. Um, I saw one town, um, and I don't know what the effect of COVID was uh as a result, but one town went down twenty percent. Another town that I've worked with um goes up by, went up by ten percent. Industry wise says that it should go up ten percent. Um, I don't know. I I without a rate increase and, you know, Oak Island holding steady with your rates, I think you're probably going to be flat year to year. Would be my expectation.
Hopefully it won't rain on Memorial Day in July fourth this year. Thank you, sir.
Um, during the course of the season, you saw a decline in the number of citations, I would imagine?
Yes, significantly.
Yeah. So in year two?
We started about uh seven percent, six and a half, seven percent, and we hit a low in August of three. And then we popped up again in September. Uh, second year, I would expect it to be in the three to four percent range on average. And that's typical second year kind of numbers.
If we go with your program, um Jim, you'd also be able to provide us similar data for that five to nine window that you provided uh for regular hours. That was very helpful.
I would make sure of it. And I would recommend that I come back and give you some of that information about every other month. Because I want to make sure that your investment in that kind of service is get, is getting the value that you expect. Uh, because I'm, it'll be interesting to see if you wanted to go down that path. We are not out there in the evenings. We don't see what the traffic is, what the spot utilization is. Um, the people that work for me that live on the island that do go down there say there's always plenty of spaces. And residents can park in any space, uh not just resident only spaces. So there is a benefit there as well. But yes, to answer your question, we will go figure out how many people are parked in spaces from five to nine and tell you how many citations we would give um based on violations. So if you did adopt that and wanted to go down that path, I would make sure we had that data.
Was I correct that you were able to give us information about the number of scans?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it would be not just citations, but scans, which would be an indication of utilization?
Yeah, we count number of parked vehicles. And that is a combination of people that buy a permit and the unique scans that we do. In a resident only spot, there is no extra permit. It's only the scans. So to your point, exactly what we would do.
Thank you.
So. To use a a football metaphor, upon further review, the decals really don't have any utility given the technology that you're using to enforce, right? They mean nothing.
Correct.
But we heard clearly what our residents were saying, that they had an expectation, at least in the peak season, that they could use the resident only spots, that they would be reserved for them. So what it seems as if we're discussing here is we're going to try this experiment and police at five to nine. And you can give us, per the mayor's request, an accurate census. Is it really a problem? Are all three, two hundred and eighty-seven of them filled? Or are they vacant at seven o'clock, July fifteenth? We don't know, right? But we will know if you're prepared to give us periodic reports, which I hear you saying.
I would, I would recommend.
Okay, well, we would insist. Uh, and then per Councilman Chulo's proposition, what we have, the same day discount has worked for us. Um, I would suggest we maintain it and then in the contract next, if we want to experiment, right? Then we can experiment. I hear what you're saying, based on your knowledge of the industry, it's likely to depress our revenue, if anything. And since you're projecting flat year over year if we don't raise rates, right? It would make sense to stay, to me, it would make sense to stay where we are, run this experiment, see if it meets the needs of our residents. And and maybe it is going to correct the problem. I I simply don't know what the nighttime parking utilization looks like.
Correct. This will tell us.
That's fair. You don't know either, right?
I really do not know. We are not out there checking it.
Okay.
So this issue really gives me heartburn. Really, really, really. Because on December the nineteenth, we sat here as a council and I made a motion for the rate for resident parking and to continue with the decal program for twenty twenty-four. And my good friend and counselor, Mr. Kraft, seconded the motion and all five council members voted unanimously to do that. And I seriously believe that we were listening to the residents. We heard that you liked the decal program. There was some personal value to you for that. And then we had to figure out how we were going to make it work. And that's where, when the rubber met the road, I did not anticipate the cost associated with managing this decal program. We're talking about spending over a hundred thousand dollars to manage a decal program. Uh, Mr. Varner has given us an option that's a little less expensive. It's still costly, fifty thousand dollars, but it will at least allow us to ensure that the resident parking spaces are not being parked in by anybody but residents from the hours of five to nine P M. I don't like any of the options. I really wanted the decal program. I like the decals, they're cool. But it's expensive and it's your money that we're talking about spending. And so we're trying to make a hard decision um and still provide benefit to the residents for maintaining the resident parking place, spaces.
Along the same lines, very well said, Councilwoman Carter. At every turn, I have said, what's in the best interest of the people of Oak Island? How do we protect the people of Oak Island? If we're not going to protect the people of Oak Island, why are we doing this? For fifty thousand dollars instead of a hundred thousand dollars, this sounds like the most viable way uh to protect the best interest of the people of Oak Island. And I agree, we voted five to zero. And then we saw some numbers. So uh as long as the people of Oak Island are protected at seven o'clock at night to go see the sunsets and park in their reserved parking spots, we have a system.
Should we vote to um extend enforcement um till nine P M? How about signage? What additional signage needs might there be?
So the contract that we have with Jim right now, the extra signs or modifications?
Yes, there are. Uh, one of the things that Mr. Kelly and I did discuss is the requirement to have new resident only signs made that indicate, you know, twenty-four, seven kind of numbers, even though we may monitor till nine o'clock. There is a cost associated with two hundred and eighty to four hundred signs. And that can range anywhere from, I don't know, probably about thirty dollars a sign. So you're probably talking about twelve to fifteen thousand, that's off the top of my head, um of just signs. But that one, that one's pretty straightforward. There's, it would also solve another problem in that there's two different kinds of resident only signs out there today. The old ones and then the new ones that caused some confusion. That would help solve that problem and make it simpler for everybody to see, understand, and know exactly what they can do in those parking spots.
Mark?
I don't even know where to begin. You know, the technology has moved forward and it moves forward quickly. You know, now we're scanning tags with people. Next year, Jim's probably going to stand here and say, a self-driving car is going to scan tags and I don't even need a person, you know, monitoring the parking lot. I don't know, I mean, the technology exists and and I'm sure it's coming and and Jim probably sees it.
I was going to say drones, but that's okay.
So I I still struggle to understand what problem are we solving? Because even even the less expensive solution being presented here this evening only monitors resident spaces until nine o'clock during parking season. I want to make sure the residents understand that because we're going to get phone calls in November saying that resident spaces are being violated. And how somebody would know that? Because if we don't issue decals anymore, are they scanning? Did they go out on Amazon and buy a tag scanning piece of equipment? I mean, I don't know where this leads to. So that's my concern is that we're getting ready to commit not just fifty thousand dollars, but now there's new signs that need to be purchased. I'm sure there'll be other costs associated. And I'm not sure we're, we understand the problem that we're trying to solve. What are we, are, do the residents want resident parking monitored during parking season from five to nine? Is that what the residents want? Or do the residents want a monitored parking space year round? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Because it doesn't sound like we are responding to a a solution. It sounds like we're just going to throw money at collecting some statistics during parking season, which we already collect that information. So I I struggle with defining the true problem statement and then developing a solution that addresses that that problem. So if that means we, the town of Oak Island, need to acquire new technology to keep up with the twenty-first century, then that's the conversation we need to be having. We used to hire seasonal parking people to monitor resident spaces. We were happy to get rid of that line item expense because we went to this new scanning technology and the vendor took over supervising and managing and tracking all the spaces, right? That was the whole point of paid parking, was to get it off of our, you know, desk and put it on somebody else to manage. So I think we need to understand the true problem and we need to develop a solution to address that problem rather than just randomly throw money at collecting more statistics. That's my concern. And and if it takes more time to get there, I'm happy to defer this to another meeting or or call a special meeting to where we figure out what's the right approach for us as a town and as a community to manage parking year round. I I think that's the topic we should be talking about. And if that means we have to require, acquire technology or we lease it from Jim, whatever the topics were that were available, that's the conversation we need to have.
Is there a motion in that?
I don't, what, what was the cost?
So Jim, Jim was doing it during the season as the fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
So then if we did do decals and staff had to hand them out, that's going to be the cost.
But this is us using his equipment?
No, that's just us handing you a decal.
Okay. And then this is new signs?
That was me making an assumption on that.
Yeah, so that number's low. Yeah, that number needs to go up. Where's the number to lease the scanning equipment?
That's what it is roughly. And what we're doing is same thing that they do in other townships where the police department.
Kurt, if you want to explain that?
Yeah, we have, we have the ability to license our technology to your police department. Um, that requires your purchase of handheld printers and appropriate Android phones that can scan and use our system to issue citations. There is a license fee associated that is totally dependent on the scope. And we have not defined a scope um as to what that license fee would be.
Yeah, so the scope that we'd be looking at, do we want him to issue the, I mean, we would issue the citation when we get the scan. We'd print it out, put it on the window. Do we want him to handle the collection of the funds?
Yeah, we would manage it from there.
I I think we need further, and I I just don't think we have enough information to to make a decision tonight. I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight because I I don't feel like the topics we've discussed truly target the need. That's just my opinion. But if you guys want to go with the fifty thousand for the five to nine, then, you know, call it to a vote and let's see where it falls.
Well, there are multiple problems here, right? That's, that's the first order of business. So much as we may be attracted to the decals, they no longer have a purpose given the technology. So that's problem one, that's solved. Problem two is whether or not we want to maintain the algorithm that we now have. So we have resident only spaces, even though residents can park anywhere, anytime, right? It appears that we do, that's what the public said. So that, that's an up charge to monitor it after hours. Does that solve a problem? Honestly, we don't know because we never collected data. So the only way to get that data is to enforce it five to nine and see if it's a problem. And it's a problem that we're ameliorating, right? Because we're, we're monitoring those spaces and it's resident only per the scan. And then if we really want decals, at some point, we can talk next year, next manager about hurricane reentry decals and everybody can have a decal again, right? Those are the two problems, let's be honest. And if we're going to blow up that algorithm, that can go any number of different ways, right? But I think last year we made a commitment that we were going to keep resident only spaces. Councilman Kraft has led that charge, he's fought for it, we've agreed to try to expand that. Residents are saying, in season at least, they are inconvenienced or sometimes annoyed by others who are not residents parking in those spaces. So we're going to enforce it. We will get data points, right? And and that's the cost of the up charge, right? So as I said, July twentieth, there are two hundred and eighty-seven spaces. Are they occupied? Who's occupying them? How many citations were issued? Now we know, right? And maybe, per your point, Mark, uh, maybe we need to expand that across the whole season, you know, the whole year. Maybe it's a bigger problem than we realize. But at least we'll have something that we've measured and we know, right? And we will have delivered another service to residents, albeit at a cost. But to me, you don't want to abandon the fundamental algorithm that generated one point three million dollars, right? If anything, you want to provide greater value to the residents, okay? And we're fifty thousand in a one point three million dollar budget is not a lot to give the residents what they want. And that's my perception, that's what they want. So let's find out. And maybe, maybe, per your point, we'll end up expanding it to the whole year. Maybe it is really a problem. Visually, I don't see a problem right now. I see all all kinds of spaces everywhere, but I don't know about in season, right? Like most residents, I try not to get in that traffic jam, right? I know enough to work around that. But so most people have adapted. I'm not going down there, you know, ten o'clock or one o'clock. And so, um, yes, it it is an expensive adaptation, but I don't think we can ignore the residents. We're committed to a resident reserved parking system. We always have, we have been since the beginning, right? And this is what we have to do this year and we'll know, right? That you're going to get definitive data for us.
Jim, is there any other alternative to new signs? Is there not an option to use some kind of vinyl decal that that corrects the current signs we have now at a, at a less cost?
Yes, there is. The question then becomes the signs that are out there. Some of them are old and rusted, and we cannot put a vinyl decal over top of that. So some signs would have to be replaced. Yeah, we can look at keeping the cost down by putting a vinyl cover over the signs that can accept it. So there are things that we can potentially do, yes. And be more than happy to investigate those and work with Mr. Kelly on that. Well, one other thing I want to give Councilman Martin credit for. If we decide to go down this path, we're going to have another education problem. We're going to have to explain another adaption to the system, right? So that visitors, non-residents, realize these spaces are monitored, and you will get ticketed. That's a challenge I think we're finally able to take on.
Yes, parking is free after 5:00, but you're not allowed to park it up.
Resident space. That's the part of the purpose for new signs in every one of those spots that clearly tells that, you know, this is resident-only all the time.
And Jim, you could also make modifications to your app to indicate that, correct?
There's probably not a modification to the app because there's a modification to the enforcement app on our side so that we can create a citation from 5:00 to 9:00 for that kind of permit or that kind of, you know, that kind of permit or violation. But there's no need in the app because nobody's going to be buying a permit. We can always add a note, "Hey, no resident parking." I think we already said that for visitors. So we can double-check that. But probably not a significant change to the app. I don't want another change to the app. Going from the December resident rates to the January resident dates caused us, you know, we had the app updated for one, and then we had to redo it all and reissue the app. And every time I do that, it takes a couple of weeks of working with Apple and Google to get those apps released. And that's something I want to avoid because that is disruptive to the customers, to the end customers. In this case, signs in your face every space, I think that's the right answer.
Yeah. Mr. Martin, if we went this $50,000 route this year with the understanding we would tweak it once we're more educated on the facts, can that become a best-case scenario?
I would like to see us have a conversation in this upcoming budget cycle about technology and our solution or adaptation to move in the technology direction that enables us to move forward with additional enforcement without relying on an outside vendor or a costly add-on to a contract. I would at least like to explore what that looks like and what the cost would be for the town to acquire technology for the off-season. That would be my request. If we could look at that in this upcoming budget cycle, then I would be adept to move forward on a decision tonight.
I can support that, and I think that's sensible because at some point, as I said earlier, if we're changing this whole algorithm, the whole basis of it, we want to do that in a cost-effective way, right? We don't want, with all due respect, we don't have to rely, especially if we go the whole year, on a vendor, right? If it's something that we can do. So, yeah, I would support that.
I would too.
I'm going to, since we have a long agenda, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the auto expansion into 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. for season only and the related cost structure. I'm hoping that we can put a real number around that when we find the most cost-effective way to change the signs. And further, as part of the motion, that we will discuss alternative technology approaches in the budget cycle. Get all that? You're wonderful. Okay. That's the motion.
Is there a second?
A second? You've got to move faster.
It's unanimous. Thank you. That was an excellent discussion. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
One word of commercial. We have 321 visitor-season permits still available for sale of the 1,500. We have not sold out yet.
Need to work up an amendment again to the contract so we can get the mayor to sign it?
Yeah, I will definitely have to work up an amendment and...
Thank you, sir.
You said out-of-camp permits have not been signed?
Yeah, it's the visitor permits.
Got you.
For the residents, we've sold about 4,200 resident permits. So they're just really getting started. If you remember, last year, we had over 18,000 resident permits. So we're only at about 4,200 right now.
And in terms of the bulk purchase, do you have a status?
Those start until March.
Until March, okay.
The 4,200 low number is not alarming at this juncture?
No, not at all.
I haven't bought mine.
Those resident permits were purchased all year long last year. So and there's, we've told people, "Yeah, go ahead and buy them, but you don't need them until April 1st if you're going to be in it. And if you're not here until June, you don't need it until June."
Thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to discussion of table of uses, timeline for revisions. Matt?
Good evening again, everyone. You have on your agenda a review. As you know, the planning board's been working pretty diligently on an effort to update our table of uses. In addition to that, reviewing our unified development ordinance for making sure we have the correct definitions as well as supplemental regulations. I discussed this with council back in May in 2023. Presented a proposed timeline for how we anticipated that work to go. And then in your agenda packet, you also have how that work actually went. So obviously, we're behind, or I wouldn't be up here. I'd be here with a recommendation instead of a timeline discussion. So if you look through the planning board actions, the first three months, we were sticking pretty good to the timeline I had proposed with town council. Month four, what happened in month four? Month four, the planning board reviewed Chapter 32, the tree ordinance. That meeting took well over three hours. And so the table of use item was moved to a special meeting in October of 2023. Got back on track in October. In October, the planning board set another special meeting for November 2023. And then in November, that meeting got canceled and then moved to December. And then finally, January, we've started. So we've pretty much wrapped up the discussion around the table itself, moved into reviewing supplemental regulations and definitions. Obviously, when, you know, it's an error on my part to not anticipate other things coming into the planning board agenda that have slowed down this table of use process, obviously. That being said, we've made really good progress, I thought, last month on this. Like I said, we're pretty much got all the feedback we're going to get on the table. And so now we're moving into definitions and supplemental regulations. We worked through about the first third in January. We've got a next big chunk coming up just on Thursday. Hopefully, our new planning board members will be there on Thursday to help us continue this work. Put a plug in for that Thursday at 9:00. Please come. And so I'm really hopeful that we'll wrap up our review in March. You know, wrap up our review in March, have a formal recommendation ready for them in April, and have it to you guys in May for your consideration. Once again, I apologize. I should have anticipated having some other big items coming into the planning board that I didn't when I put together this timeline for you guys. A couple of notes about things we've done along the way. In July and August, we reached out to several local organizations for stakeholder feedback. We reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, the airport, Friends of Parks, BASE, which is Business Alliance for Sound Economy, and, you know, wanted to set up meetings specifically for them. We got meetings set up with BASE and the Chamber. Didn't get any responses from the other groups we reached out to. But that being said, I have spoken with Howie at the airport in the interim since these two things happened. He came to talk to me about something else. And I kind of shared what the planning board was working on as it relates to the airport. And he seemed pretty supportive of what we had discussed and the way that that had been shaken out. So, yeah, that's what we had anticipated and where we're at now and where I see us going forward. Like I said, at the pace that the planning board's been working so far, I feel pretty confident we'll have something back to you guys in May. What I would probably recommend to them, having had this happen a couple of times, is if our regular meeting is obviously being jammed up with agenda items, let's go ahead and schedule something so that we've kind of got an outlet meeting, you know, on the books. So if we get bogged down with one thing, we've got something to fall back on in short order so that we can make sure that this review continues. It's, Councilman Carter's been there. She's helped out quite a lot on this. So hopefully, she can speak to the complexity of the issue that we're dealing with here. I've talked to some other folks. And when I told them that we were, as a town, individually not hiring someone else to review our table of uses, they kind of looked at me aghast. So that being said, we've made some real good progress, and I hope that progress continues. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or get any feedback from council as necessary.
Matt, is your target date May 2024? And I'll just say for my fellow council members, I did speak to David Bradley, Chair of the Planning Board, today. He had every intention of trying to be here, but his wife was ill, and so he needed to be with her. We do have the Vice Chair, Carrie McCullough, here. My question, Matt, is this May 2024, is that to totally complete the table of uses? Or is that just to deal with the S's, the special use?
No, that'd be the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We're trudging through everything right now. We're getting through everything that we've marked as potentially needing supplemental regulations, and we're reviewing those as we go along. And like I said, assuming we have good progress at this meeting, I'll anticipate that we'll be more than halfway through that. So if we can get a good March meeting as well to table that, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to receive all that feedback. So then what I would do in April is come forward for their formal recommendation, right? So I'd have the full, whole reorganization drafted out with their, with their proposed consistency statement for them to adopt and get it to council in May, should they, should all that occur like I would like it to.
Matt, will we be able to get a Cliff Notes version in March and April of the progress?
I can, yeah. If you guys want me to come in and do an overview of kind of, you know, what's going on, I'd be happy to, probably work with Lisa since she's keeping the minutes, you know, to bullet out everything that's happening.
First time and...
Yeah, yeah. I don't want you guys to be blindsided, for sure. Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that for you.
I can't stress enough the importance of having these special meetings because, as you said, oftentimes, the regular meeting agenda is full with cases that need to be heard and things that need to be dealt with. And when I was on the planning board, we were fairly successful at getting special meetings scheduled. There were times when meetings had to be moved to another date that kept us from scheduling a second meeting. But I would encourage you to get some of those meetings on the calendar. And I think that's where you can do your, make the greatest progress, is in those special meetings.
Yeah, and you all know, we also had several new members come on. We've got new members coming on next month. And there's a little bit of onboarding to make sure that they know what's going on and are up to speed with what we're doing with this effort, too. But, yeah, absolutely, I agree, Ms. Carter.
I would be curious if our, if the Vice Chair of the Planning Board could just tell us if that seems like a reasonable schedule, knowing the amount of work that goes into the table of uses, yeah?
I have props. Don't go away. Matt, don't go too far.
Council, Mayor White, staff, I'm Carrie McCullough. Just for the record, I live at 108 Northeast 57th Street, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. This dog-eared, relatively innocuous document represents my working copy of the table of uses. And so while I am optimistic about a May timeline, I am somewhat skeptical, knowing the work that's gone into where we are today and what we still have to do. I think it's more work than any of us envisioned. I think I'd, you know, I'd ask the question of myself sometimes, like, you know, "How do you eat an elephant one bite at a time?" And this has been a very long meal relative to this table of uses document. But I personally believe unless we can provide, to Council Carter's suggestion, special meetings in addition to our regular monthly meetings between now and May, I really don't see how we could meet a May deadline to council. And that's just my personal professional opinion as someone who's doing the work on this dog-eared document. So I'm happy to answer any questions about what we've done or...
No, I mean, I think it's a complicated, multi-layered problem, right? And so we have too many uses and not enough supplemental standards, and it's a grind going through it.
Yes.
I'm just going to say this, that council, when it gave the task initially, said, "Post Boardwalk Hotel. Fix this and do it with all deliberate speed. Pull out all the stops. We don't want to be in this position again where an attorney is mocking us by saying, 'Well, I could put a bowling alley there, porn show,'" you know? We've had enough. So council's direction has been clear. You will have our full support, but we need to move as quickly as we can and accomplish the work. I mean, that's really the issue here.
Yeah, there are just so many, within the Section 7, I think, there's so many supplemental regulations that we did not have. And so just to go through the table of uses, try to change what are called S's within the table to permitted with S's or, you know, special uses with supplemental regs, then those regulations that didn't exist have to be built. So there's a lot of work around just building that text. And then A dot 3 is the definitions surrounding all the table of uses, right? So we've been revising, in collaboration with Matt and with staff, revising all these definitions, of which there are quite a few, and some needed to be added there as well. So it's just, it's a lot of detailed work. Not to make excuses, it's our appointment. It's what we're here to do, and we're committed to doing. But I think that it will be for David, you know, Chair Bradley and myself to make sure that we do get these special meetings set so that we can expedite and move through to a May goal. I have no problem committing to a goal, but I just want to be realistic about having you guys understand exactly what's involved. It really is a lot of detailed, you know, just writing text and writing definitions and things like that. So it's a lot of manual labor, if you will, so...
We appreciate what you do. Don't misunderstand our...
No, no, I understand.
Our sense of urgency is because we're confronted with things that need to be fixed. But we thank you for your labor.
I think I can speak for the Planning Board and say that we understand the urgency of it, but there's just so much minutia to work through to get to those better solutions. So we appreciate your patience.
And we just gave you two new recruits. Put them to work.
Bring them up to speed quick.
Get them up.
Before you walk away, what begs the question for me is how we, as a council, even review something of this size and complexity because doing it in a weekend would not, the time doesn't map to the task? So if there are recommendations for how council... So if there are recommendations for how council approaches a review of something so complex and so big and be able to comment with an informed opinion as opposed to glossing it over, I think this council is willing to hear suggestions.
Okay. I'll get with the Chairman and with, and with Mr. Kirkland and we try to figure out maybe a better way to bring something that's more meaningful and logical for you guys. It's, it is just, it's an immense amount of text, really, for all of us to try to absorb and understand. No doubt about that.
To maybe take the burden off, off Matt on, on reports, can somebody from the planning board come monthly and give us an update?
Sure. I'll talk to our chair, make sure that we have someone here available to do that. If that's okay with Matt.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you for all of your good work.
So, A, thanks for your service. You're doing an amazing job. So you're skeptical of May. So without putting you on the spot, like what month do you feel a much higher degree of confidence that this can be, you'd be right?
I think if we can, if we on the board can schedule some special meetings in addition to our regular monthly meetings and maybe double up our meetings every month at least, we may be able to make a May deadline. But if we can't do that, I really, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to make a commitment for May. And I really could, it would be, maybe...
There's one thing that we have to consider when we have all these special meetings is we only have one clerk.
Yes.
So everything that you're asking her to do and produce the minutes and keep up, we already know that in February, we have nine council meetings for budget workshops, regular meeting, the planning board meeting, anyway. So when you're looking at that, trying to get a special meeting in there, unless we're going to get a deputy clerk for a while or something like that, we don't have but one Lisa that we can utilize. And then she actually has to get the agenda ready for the next meeting and other things. It's not just sitting on the board doing those kind of things. So we, we got to look at all these kind of aspects to try to be able to get these meetings in or to look at getting a deputy clerk for a while to be able to fill in some of these kind of meetings.
Can you look into that for council to give us something to consider? I mean, I respect how much time that our clerk puts in, having worked with you closely, certainly not in your office every day, all day, but I have an appreciation for how much you actually do. And if, to get the work done, it requires a deputy clerk, I think that's something that council should consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We just keep taking on one task after another. Consideration of ordinance amendments to Chapter 32, which is vegetation. Did we lose Matt?
Well, Lisa's prepared everything, the changes and everything are in here for you. So I think, yeah, I'll let you take that.
Yeah, I did. So I took the January meeting and listened at least through the tree discussion so that I encapsulated all the changes the council wanted in what was presented to them at that meeting. And then I took, Mr. Patterson had recommendations, planning board had recommendations, Councilmember Karpner had recommendations. There were other recommendations from council members, Martin and Kraft also discussed. And so I incorporated all of that into one document. There were two additional items that were highlighted in yellow. One was just a grammar fix and the other one, if I can find what page it's on, and the other one was on page 92 in the agenda packet. And added a phrase for council to consider to make it clear that the planting of new trees shall only be allowed to meet the required DBH when the required number of existing trees cannot be retained on the lot. Didn't want someone to erroneously and crazily think that that meant they couldn't plant a tree otherwise. So that was just one thing I suggested that you add. And otherwise, I think Councilmember Karpner may have one question about, is it 3276?
Yes.
B1, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So first, thank you, Madam Clerk. That was quite a task to try to pull all the information together from so many different sources and incorporate it in the document that we have tonight. There was a document that is part of our package, I believe it's part of our package this time, from Rick Patterson. And in that, he made his recommendations, which I assume are the same recommendations that he made last month at the podium. However, we didn't have benefit of that copy in front of us. So we were trying to cobble together what he was, the changes that he was asking for. And on one of those changes is a, it's under 3276 dot 1 dot B dot 1. It's on page 92 of your agenda packet. And what that says is that planted trees shall be credited with, for five DBH per each two-inch minimum DBH tree. Now, when I look back at the notes that Madam Clerk provided from that meeting, I see where council approved, made a motion and approved Mr. Patterson's recommendations for 32-76, 1A, B, and D. But we did not approve B dot 1. And I have a problem with B dot 1. I think it goes against what we're trying to do, which is preserve trees rather than replace them. And if we start to give builders more credit for planting a two-inch tree than for what they can save on the lot, we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, I'm afraid. So that is the only modification that I, I see that, that doesn't jive with what I think we approved last month. And so I'd like to bring that one item up for consideration.
So you're saying if they cut a two-inch tree...
If they keep.
If they plant a two-inch tree, they get credit as if it were a five-inch tree. So it makes it easier for them to just cut down the tree and plant a two-inch tree and get five credit for it, five inches' credit for it.
Only if the tree comes from Table 1, is how I read that. Furthermore, my understanding from last discussion is while there was confusion on how Mr. Patterson numbered his changes, that, I recall that that was in his notes and that we approved all of his changes under Section 32-76 that night.
Well, in the notes, it said, "We're approving text amendments for 32-76 dot 1A, B, and D." It doesn't say dot 1A, B dot 1, and D. So I was not under the impression that that one sentence was, was to be included.
So this is the first time we've seen the sentence? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. That, I believe that's, that's the case.
That could be interpreted either way. 1B would mean everything included in B or 1B means 1B without subsection 1. So that, I don't know what it means.
Well, but the question is, I think, on the table is whether or not we want to reconsider that sentence. So let your last decision stand or do we make a modification in the interest of the bigger goal of preserving trees?
And I'm going so far as to say that I believe this appearing in our documents today was not approved by us in January. So I think that's, that's an error in what we have today. But I also think that the fact that it's here is a dangerous, a dangerous sentence to have in our tree ordinance.
So is your recommendation that we just remove that, that sentence?
That one sentence, that's correct.
Is there a motion so that we can have further discussion?
I would like to make a motion that we remove 3276, 1A, I mean, 1B dot 1 from the Chapter 32 revisions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Planted trees shall be credited five DBH per each two-inch minimum DBH tree. If we take that out, what does this say about cutting it?
Then a two-inch tree, you get two inch, you get two credits for it.
And that says that somewhere?
Yes. Credits are based on the actual size of the tree. And I think we're going down the wrong road by assigning more credits to a tree than its actual size.
And of all this language on all these pages, that's the only thing we want to modify?
That's, I read it. That's the only thing I found that was inconsistent with my, what I had written down.
Well, I'm not comfortable changing that without Mr. Patterson being here to review his notes nor seeing his original notes, which I thought we had agreed upon at the last meeting.
Unfortunately, Mr. Patterson knew we were going to be discussing this tonight.
Well, he, he asked if he could, he needed to leave, so I told him he could leave. I didn't know there was any, I knew you would ask the question earlier and I agree with what she is, her statement about it is. When he talked to this at first, he was looking at a two-year credit. When they planted a tree, a two-year credit, they were hoping that the tree would be the five-inch. That's why. He had said give him five-inch. But I understand what she's saying about if you plant a tree at two-inch, it should be accredited plant of a two-inch. It shouldn't be accredited of a plant of a five-inch.
Madam Mayor, out of respect for Councilwoman Martin's concern here, I would suggest that we revise the motion. Mr. Chulo, if you're agreeable to this, let's remove that sentence for further review when we get Mr. Patterson in the room. Everything else in this document is good. We should approve the balance of the text and just hold that aside until we can get confirmation of whether that's accurately in or not.
Do you care to amend your motion?
The issue, the concern I see there, Councilback, is that we're using a March 15th effective date. I believe that's what we voted on. And if we continue to punt on this, does that push that March 15th effective date back? And this seems very clear to me. This was not in the, we previously voted. It was, I'm not sure how it worked its way in here.
Well, Councilwoman Martin's going to withdraw his objection. I'm fine with striking it. But honestly, that was a very long meeting. Mr. Patterson appeared at the end of it and I'm not sure I really have an accurate view of that.
Well, let's, let's assume that it was added legitimately. Not that I would consider that anything would be illegitimately added. But let's assume that that's what happened, right? So here it is. And the question is, today, what do we want to do about it? The motion on the table is that it get removed.
I'll just say that I pulled it from Mr. Patterson's email to me as to what his recommendations were.
Right, right. So, I mean, it's there legitimately?
I like Mr. Box's motion.
To point out that it is in our notes that we approved Section 1A in its entirety, which includes four bullet points, sub-numbers under that. But yet we're not sitting here scrutinizing additional sub-bullets under Section 1A, which was in the notes as being approved. So it says Section 1A, 1B, and, and D. So that tells me if this sub number one was in his original notes, why, why is it being treated differently than the sub number 1, 2, 3, and 4 under 1A? We're sitting here like, oh, 1A, yeah, we just did the whole thing. And now we get to 1B and we're like, oh, wait a minute. We didn't do number one or number, we didn't do these extra bullets. So that's why, I guess, I'm confused because...
Because, Mr. Martin, when you're dealing with ordinances, typically you call it out to its 10th degree. If it's 9.1, 0.3, 0.2, 0.1, you call it all the way out. And if you don't, it doesn't include it.
We didn't do that for 1A, is what I'm saying. I'm looking at the notes right here that Lisa provided from that meeting. We did not call out for 1A all of the sub-numbers that were included in that, yet they exist today in this draft. So how can we be certain that the sub-number under B was not included if we're taking for granted that all of the 1 through 4 for Section 1A was included? There's inconsistency either in our decision-making last time or the note-taking or interpretation. But I just don't understand how we can scrutinize 1B when 1A is being passed through in flying colors without identifying those sub-numbers in there. If you say that in planning, you have to read out the whole number, then we failed ourselves on 1A because we didn't read out all of the numbers for that discussion under 1A last month. That's all I'm saying.
I misspoke and I don't need a lecture, okay?
Not lecture.
Do you understand the context of what this B1 actually says? Do you understand?
I understand that the intent from Mr. Patterson, according to Mr. Kelly, was that that tree is going to grow. So a two-inch tree that I plant today is not a two-inch tree a year from now or two years from now. That tree, if it survives, increases in diameter. And I think that's what Mr. Patterson was trying to account for is the fact that, number one, finding trees is hard and expensive. So number two, he was trying to give homeowners credit for a tree growing on their property to meet a certain diameter size, especially if it comes from Table 1. And Table 1 are specific species of trees that have various growth rates and will achieve certain diameters over a period of time.
So are you speaking for Mr. Patterson or are we going to do what you suggested and bring Mr. Patterson back?
I would love to hear from Mr. Patterson when he's not here. So to Councilmember Box's suggestion that we could remove it in, temporarily, until we hear from Mr. Patterson at a future meeting. But then I understand Councilmember Chulo's concern that, well, we tried to set a March 15th start date for this, right? So we got a little bit of a rub here. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable nitpicking on this one sentence when we're allowing all these other changes that we voted on to stay in the document.
I, I wouldn't respectfully disagree. I would not refer to that as nitpicking. I mean, clearly, if two-inch tree is a two-inch tree, it's two-inch tree's worth of credit. A two-inch tree cannot get a five-inch credit because it may be five inches 10 years from now. I mean, that to me is faulty logic and let's just go with what we have. We have a two-inch tree and call it what it is, a two-inch tree. Your four-inch tree is a four-inch tree. I mean, to assign another size to a tree based on what may or may happen in the future, I think is just very faulty logic. And I would like to move forward on the motion that I made and call it, oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Well, let me try one more time to find the middle ground here. So if we strike this, which is the motion on the floor, and subsequently, Councilwoman Martin, you want to look at Mr. Patterson's notes? We could consider them after the fact, rather than hold up the entirety of this project and all of the work that went into it. Is that not acceptable? Or are you simply saying we can't proceed unless every line is dotted, approved?
I'm saying, at some point, I would like to consult with Mr. Patterson again, since he's not here this evening, and review his notes. Because I believe when we adopted 32-76 in its entirety, based on Mr. Patterson's notes, it would have included all of these sub-numbers that are listed here. So now we're trying to exclude these when we already adopted these. So yes, I would like to see, and he- So yes, I would like to see and hear from Mr. Patterson at some point in the future. But I understand the urgency to get this done so we can meet a March 15th deadline. I understand that, and I agree with that. I'm not disputing that fact at all. My only concern is understanding the intent of how Mr. Patterson included this in his notes that I feel like were adopted, but...
One option would be to remove it. So we agreed that, and then hear from Mr. Patterson and add it back in if you're convinced as a council that, that it's warranted.
Well, that, Madam Mayor, that was offered as an alternative. We would have to revise the motion that's on the floor versus to strike it.
Do we have a motion and a second to strike it?
Not yet, you don't.
We have a motion, we don't have a second.
You have a motion to take it out, yes.
Do we have a second?
Is there a second to Mr.?
Yes, there is a second.
I'd like to call a question.
All in favor? And opposed? And that, so that passes 3 to 2? To remove it? Thank you. It passes 3 to 2, and...
It's removed, but nothing precludes us from hearing from him in the future, but...
Correct.
Right?
Exactly what I was gonna say.
Let's just move forward, we'll get him back in here.
The reason I want to know, I don't know who the tree program manager is, and I want to hear, if it's Patterson, I want the tree program manager.
It is Patterson, and I'm saying...
If he's the tree program manager...
Bill, what I'm saying is, rather than stop the train, right, which has been months, years in the making, we'll take the section that's objected to out, and we'll let him come in and examine it. Otherwise, we're not going to meet this deadline. And I think Councilman Chulo's right about that, we can't...
Do we need a motion to bring Mr. Patterson back for consideration of...
No, you can just get consensus of council that we'll put it on the old business item.
Is that all right to put it on the March agenda?
It'll be here.
Consensus of council? Yes, yes, yes.
Need a motion to adopt the rest of the article as presented.
That's right, thank you.
Our next council meeting is March 13th.
A motion to adopt everything?
I think, my esteemed colleagues should make that motion at the end.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the Chapter 32...
I'm sorry, Mr. Eads is looking at us.
I just, Madam Clark, at this point, should we include in that motion effective as of March 15th?
The motion that was to strike it?
The one they're getting ready to adopt. At some point, that needs to be in a motion.
Yes, that is in the suggested motion.
Okay.
To ratify...
I don't think it was in the last motion is what I'm saying, so...
It'll be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a suggested motion I should be reading?
I would say, motion to approve the amendments, Chapter 32, as further amended this evening, and to ratify the effective date for those changes as March 15th, 2024.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? 5 unanimous, thank you very much. Consideration of a policy for processing Code of Ethics complaints against appointed and elected officials. John.
So, the hour is late, I'm going to give a very brief history here, and then I think we do have some points that need to be discussed. So, over a year ago, the code was developed by council and the mayor. This is a customary, quintessential document for every organization that I can think of. We didn't have one. The next step was to get a form and a procedure to execute it. I took ownership of that as your editor. I have incorporated the changes that were given to me. Some changes were not submitted, and council previous held up adoption in December, and was carried over into January. So I would submit, before we have discussion, that whatever the conclusion of this conversation is, we need to approve this and move forward because this has been hanging around limply for too long. I know there are objections to some of the language that came from council. I'm going to open the floor because I incorporated the changes as best I could. So I don't know who wants to begin, but either...
We need a motion so we can discuss.
It's up to the mayor, I mean, it's up to you.
So, concerns? No one has a concern? This is the moment?
I do.
Okay.
So in the second paragraph, I believe it's the second sentence where it says, "All forms must be notarized, however, the town staff shall not be eligible to notarize the complaint affidavit." I would just like to know the thinking on that. We're asking people to come and present identification to fill out this form, and I don't understand the additional need for a notary, particularly causing them to have to leave Town Hall and go somewhere and find someone who can do that.
Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. It's because the form that they will fill out is actually an affidavit. And by law, in the state of North Carolina, an affidavit requires a notary.
Mr. Eads.
To be an affidavit, in federal court, you can have what's called a statement under oath, but that's not the same as an affidavit. So to be a affidavit, it has to be under penalty of perjury, sworn to, and subscribed before a notary.
Okay, so given that it has, that this particular form we're going to adopt has to be before a notary, then I still object to the fact that town staff can't notarize that affidavit.
If I could add to that, you know, the purpose of a notary is not, not to review any of the documentation, to review the verbiage, it's simply to make sure that person who is signing the affidavit is who he or she says they are by checking the right date. So to say that town staff can't notarize, if we're going to, since we're requesting notarization, to me seems petty. I know trying to get a notary, having done it myself, banks, sometimes they will, sometimes they won't, you can go to UPS store and pay for it, but since they're coming here anyway, and all they're doing is somebody's attesting to, the notary's attesting to, that person is in fact who they are, I don't, I don't see why there'd be a problem there with having town staff notarize.
I mean, I don't have a direct answer. I can only assume that, given the sensitivity of a complaint on a ethics violation, staff may not want to, their name recorded as participating in that process. I, that's the only assumption I can make, but maybe, maybe our town manager can answer that question?
Yeah, when it first came out, one of the texts that we read said that the clerk would not be, get to sign or be required to sign it. And then we just added the, if the clerk was not authorized to notarize it, then the other staff shouldn't be asked upon to notarize it as well. You are right about you witness who they are in signing a notary for that method. As long as it, we don't see anything, or anybody has to look at anything, or if somebody comes back and says, "I gave it to this person," and they read it when they were stamping it, or whatever like that, we all hear the gossip and everything that come out of the Town Hall on a daily basis, and if you want to put your staff into that situation where they can get that, then we'll sign the affidavits. But that's totally up to council. I mean, if that's something that, the duty that we need to add to for us to do, we'll do that.
You know, in thinking about the potential volume of the, I mean, to me, it seems relatively inconsequential. You know, an odd complaint here or there, whether it's about a council, councilman, boards of committees, I just cannot see, this doesn't apply to staff, it's at this point, it's simply just boards, committees, and elected officials. The amount of complaints, again, seems inconsequential. I just, I just don't think we should belabor that issue personally.
If a notarization is simply to validate the person is who they say they are...
And that they signed the document.
Then that's already happening before they hand them the form.
Correct. And you look on this page, other relevant information, I mean, as long as it's only that one page that they're witnessing signing, and it's not any of the writing of the document, then I would agree 100% with you.
They're not attesting to the validity.
I understand that.
There's a whole process for that.
If you look at the document that's printed, there's four lines on top of the page that the person could have filled out. And we already hear about, you know, "It came out of Town Hall." Well, we don't want them to say "It came out of Town Hall staff."
Understand.
So that's why I say, if we can clean up the page and not have anything on that page, and it's just a clean page of signature, then I agree with you 100%.
And we certainly can do that.
Good time, date stamp it, that's routine, right? Provide the person filing with a copy, so it can't be contested, and take notary out. Does that solve this problem? I mean, I don't want to...
Well, the other option is...
I think the conversation is just allow town staff to do the notary, so the person doesn't have to go to another source. They'll come here, fill out the form, they'll sign it, the notary witnesses the signature, notarizes the document, one-stop shop.
So can we just say, "All forms must be notarized"? We don't have to tell them that town staff has to do it? We don't...
Right, exactly, yeah.
If they want to, if they're smart enough to say, "Well, is there somebody here at Town that can do that for me?"
David is asking that the signature page be a separate page.
Shouldn't be a problem with that, I mean, it is now.
If we put on the signature page, page 1, page 2 of 2...
That, that one's going to be my suggestion, if we're going to have just the signature page with the notary, and the notary probably should say "Sworn and subscribed to" before me. They should be numbered, so it's clear that this is a second page of a 2-page document.
Then there, then there's no question that the person signing it did not see the complaint. That's the only thing that we were trying to make sure that nobody came back on us and said, you know, "You, you saw it." Well, no, we didn't see it.
Like Councilman Chilo said, we're talking 1 or 2 a year at the most, I hope.
Yeah.
Knock on wood.
Hope so.
Yeah.
All right, so that fixes that problem. Where are there other concerns?
Well, do we need to vote on that one, or do we take everything at the same time?
I mean, if there's a consensus, then you can just do 1 vote to incorporate the changes.
But there is a motion on the table.
Well, let's get an omnibus, there's other concerns, if we get it all in one motion, it'd be much more efficient.
I'm fine with that.
One of the concern I have with the amended form, it prohibits multiple filings from multiple individuals towards 1 or more, or multiple individuals regarding the same topic, and I would like that stricken. I think that if, think back to a former elected official of the town, put a very vile Facebook post up, and if 25 citizens in the community want to file a complaint about that one vile Facebook post, I think they should be able to do that. And I would not want to restrict anybody's ability to filing what they think is an ethics complaint.
But what this says, Bob, is multiple filings from the same individual...
Keep going, I'm sorry.
Toward one individual regarding the same topic will not be permitted. That just means that some...
No, no, multiple, I'm sorry.
Somebody named Fred can't just keep filing against somebody named Larry.
Multiple filings from multiple individuals toward one individual regarding the same topic. So again, if 15 people have the same complaint about something that took place, you know, I would like that, I think that is a, that's sure to be prerogative and right to do that.
I haven't been in favor of this from the beginning because I'm fearful that the brown-shirt boys from Germany are going to be marching up and down the streets looking for people to file complaints against. And I like the thought of 1 or 2 complaints a year, and that's it. I don't like special interest groups getting together, unless, unless 20 of us send in an affidavit, that's not what we're trying to accomplish.
Can I just clarify something, Councilman Chulo? So the clause that you're objecting to is after the comma, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right, okay, so the first part you're okay with?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not...
Absolutely.
Nor will multiple filings from multiple individuals, that's, that's the part of the sentence that you're concerned with.
It, it's overkill. Again, special interest groups, hey, let's all get together, everybody run down to Town Hall tomorrow. If there's 1 complaint filed, it gets, it gets read, it gets dealt with. We don't need 12 people from the special interest groups to all sign the same, sign the same affidavit. One affidavit gets it brought before the arbiter.
Nor do we need the arbitrator following up on 12 different forms and billing the town for 12 different forms for the exact same topic. I think this was a, more of a efficiency, cost-savings measure to avoid, you know, an arbitrator working for 12 people on the same topic. Because we're paying the bill.
Seems to me it's less likely that a group of people are going to get together and file a complaint, as individual people may recognize the same problem and come to Town Hall and file a complaint, and they don't know that somebody else has filed a complaint. So, you know, how are we going to know who got, who got there first, and is only the first person the only one that's valid?
Mr. Eads, does an arbiter have the flexibility, if they receive 15 complaints from 15 different people about the same specific situation, do they have the flexibility to pick 1 of those to review, or are they mandated to review all 15?
As it's written, it could be construed that they're mandated to report on all of, all of them. I mean, this is a policy, it's not an ordinance. I won't serve for the public's benefit as the arbiter, I don't think that's the intention, but for example, if I was the arbiter, and I received 12 complaints on 1 person regarding 1 incident, to the extent it was duplicative, I would, I would synthesize that in my report saying, "On these dates, I've received this many complaints from this many people about this incident. Here were the witnesses, here were the evidence, here's my opinion." And we can instruct the arbiter that to call out, not ignore, but to not repeat the same thing for 15 essentially identical complaints. And it would be a professional that will have the ability to investigate this, coalesce his or her findings, and provide that.
Very helpful. So Councilman Martin, given that, and the ability, that flexibility that we, or the mandate that we can give the arbitrator to synthesize multiple complaints, would you be in agreement with that?
I would, yeah, I mean, that would, that would suffice, I would agree with that.
We'll need...
But those instructions are not included.
They're not yet drafted.
Yeah.
And I think, if I can ask council before, when we do the motion, let's add that language about duplicative complaints and... Because I, I understand what Councilman Kraft is saying. We don't want this to be turned into some kind of weaponized instrument. We, we don't want it to be frivolous, we don't want it to be some kind of organized attempt, right? So if there are back, backside guardrails that the arbiter has, I, for one, would be comfortable with that. We just need to change that second clause, Councilman Chulo, to the arbiter has the authority to review. Give me the sentence, counselor, this is late at night.
I was looking at it, and I said, "If multiple filings from multiple individuals toward 1 or multiple individuals regarding the same topic are received, the arbiter will have the latitude to synthesize all the complaints, however you want to say all of them."
There you go, that's fine. I think that resolves the problem.
May I make one other request?
Of course.
Or suggestion. The arbiter's decision, I, I would...
Recommendation?
Either recommendation or assessment.
Okay.
That, that's what it will be anyway, because ultimately, it's a council decision, but just, the word "decision" connotes some sort of power. I, I don't want anyone to think the arbiter is the end-all, be-all of, of received complaints.
An excellent suggestion, thank you, council. And I would say to the concern, the language is very clear, the council retains the right to dis... to decide all of these matters. So if it were to be weaponized by an organized group for nefarious purposes, right, council could reject that based on its review, regardless of what the arbiter recommended. All right, there are other objections, I believe, there's one more?
Yes.
Before we go there, is the right word topic or incident? You used the word, Mr. Eads, you used incident.
I'm assuming the complaint would be concerning an incident.
Versus topic.
Or incident.
So that would be a word change.
Go ahead, Terry.
The sentence that begins, "Social media post will not be considered viable evidence." Again, I would ask, why not? If a person is able to take a screenshot that someone has posted something online, it seems to me that should be considered evidence. I agree that hearsay and rumors should not. But as long as that becomes physical evidence, I'm not sure why that wouldn't be considered. If somebody posts something and you get a screenshot of it and it's about you, then you ought to be able to use it for evidence. That's what happened to me.
I agree with you.
I would say that how are you gonna prove that individual is truly that individual? On social media, you can create multiple profiles, you can create your own name, you can create aliases, you can post on multiple platforms, anything you want, you can spread disinformation, and there is no way to identify a person by capturing a screenshot. The only way to identify that person is you have to use sophisticated tracking technology to trace back the IP address. And then even once you get the IP address of the device, you have to actually get a warrant, in most cases, to find out the identity of the person behind the IP address. My email was potentially hacked over the summer last year, my town council email, not my personal email, my town council email. I was locked out of my email. Our IT provider could not even change the password to get me access to my email. I traced the IP, I had the ability to trace the IP to a computer in Colorado. Who do we know in Colorado that would be interested in hacking my town email address? So I had to stop there because I'm not gonna pursue the necessary paperwork to identify the owner behind the IP. I'm just letting you know, social media is not a reliable source that can identify the person behind the means of disinformation that's being spread. You never know who it is. There are even people within the town of Oak Island, believe it or not, that operate under different profile names on social media. So they can post all over Fakebook, I call it, and other social media platforms. So I will firmly suggest that that stay in there because social media data can be manipulated and can be used in a weaponized manner against an individual.
And I would disagree. I would say to the extent that ownership can be proven, it should be viable evidence.
I'm sitting here listening to two of my friends discuss a tough, tough subject. I'm sitting here thinking, if I didn't say that, I should be able to say arbiter? I was at the ballgame Tuesday night, when that was posted at 7:15, I was at the ballgame in the stands and 80 people saw me. Don't hold that one against me. But then I hear Terry say, if somebody says something, doggone it, I can take a screenshot of it, I ought to be able to say, look, that Bill was streaking around the football stadium, and here's a picture of him, I saw it on social media, she ought to be able to use that. I like your last statement. Social media post that can be validated. I know we're getting into all kinds of gray areas, but golly, there's two good arguments.
I mean, I wouldn't want anybody whose account had been hacked to be wrongly accused, but there are legitimate folks out there using their accounts for nefarious purposes, and they're easily identified.
Should be held accountable.
So, counselor, would it be possible to provide additional guidance to the arbitrator with respect to social media information and data?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Maybe that's the solution to this discussion.
I think everyone on this council is professional, and I think the arbiter will be professional, and there's gonna have to be some, I mean, we can't legislate every possible scenario here. And I think if there's an issue at all about whether someone, about the authenticity of a particular social media post, then that can be brought to the forefront. I see that concerns on both sides. Our law firm's been hacked by Russians before, 10 years ago, we had to get the FBI involved, so it happens, 15 years ago, literally by a Russian outfit. But I think that we need to bring common sense to bear, and if there's any issues, we can vet that out. The idea here is to have someone swear to a complaint, so it's, you know, at least in their minds, is serious enough to do that. And then have a neutral third party unaffiliated with the town to look into it and give his or her best assessment as to what they find.
So as part of that assessment, they're either validating that the evidence is verifiable or not.
Sure. And, you know, once they communicate their assessment to the board, the board as well, then it's right, and I encourage the board. If you have any questions about the assessment, did you vet this out? Did you validate this? How do you know this was actually their post? How do you know this was actually their email? I mean, it's not gonna be the gospel just because of, it's just kind of a way to, it's a clearinghouse, so we have an independent third part, professional third party to look at it to make your investigation into it more streamlined. And I don't know that I'm answering your question or not, I just, I, these are all valid points, and I think some of this is gonna be kind of our maiden voyage, and we're probably gonna have to tweak as we go along. Hopefully, this won't, there won't be a whole lot of complaints. But I think the more constraints you put in there, you're gonna get people saying, you didn't take my complaint seriously because you wouldn't let me bring in this, or wouldn't let me bring in that. And at the same time, some people are gonna say, hey, I didn't send that email, or I didn't post that, so.
So in the sentence before, we say, verifiable emails are acceptable. Well, your email can be hacked, your social media can be hacked, so it seems to me that anything that's verifiable, that's not rumor or hearsay, ought to be allowed to be submitted as evidence, and the arbiter will make a decision about whether or not it's usable or not.
And we can give instructions to the arbiter that state in your assessment whether you were confirmed by the alleged poster, or the alleged email sender. And he or she can say, I tried to get up with John Smith, see if they posted this, wasn't able to get him, so I was not able to verify whether they posted it themselves, it does appear to be their Facebook page or whatever.
I'm just letting you know that social media data is the easiest data to manipulate. And I challenge anybody to refute that. It is the easiest data to manipulate because it's accessible, it's exposed, and there's no accountability behind it.
It just seems like we're muddying the water by trying to describe so many different scenarios that are and are not accepted. It seems like it ought to be documented and verifiable evidence, and maybe we say as determined by the arbiter can be submitted as evidence. To Mr. Eads' point, you know, the more things we add or the more things we take out, the more complicated and tricky it becomes.
Well, and the arbiter's not gonna be able to verify it until they receive it, so. So if you, if they're only gonna look at verified social media or emails, how are they gonna know that it's verified until they get it and go try to verify it, so.
I would like to, I would like to think that the accused, if innocent, would say, that's not my email, I did not do that. I would think nine out of 10 accused were either seen shoplifting at the liquor store or whatever, they were seen and blah, blah, it's a done deal. But the ones that say that was not me, the arbiter can put in the report.
They should note that.
Can note that in the report.
And if you think by and large, when people have an issue with a Facebook post, and I'm using Facebook, I know there's 15 different social medias out there, generally, they, there are other posts on that person's page, or, there's ways you can say, at a minimum, this came from their account. But, you know, I think, I think we're, I think the goal of having a third party here is to have someone who doesn't have an axe to grind, can look at it objectively, and consider those type of things. Like if you get some whacked-out, crazy one post on an account that was just created two days ago, then that's suspect. But if you've got a post that you can see a litany of prior posts, and there's really no question it's this person's account, then that's a different scenario.
So I would try and keep it just as simple as possible for Councilman Karpner, only documented evidence is acceptable for review. And we take out all the other stuff, because there's so much stuff we're not gonna be able to include in there, because we're gonna always miss some stuff.
Right.
So whether it's social media, I mean, hell, you can document a video, I mean, you could doctor a video. So the arbitrator will research each complaint the same exact way, by talking to the complainant, talking to the other party, and digging in and trying to find out what the accuracy of that complaint is.
Right. I mean, think about it, if you were tasked with doing, I know what I would do, I would call these people, and if they say, I'm not talking to you, I would note that in my report.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's capture the language, go ahead.
I would offer a suggestion, the sentence that says, "All properly filed complaints will be reviewed by an independent arbiter, including all submitted evidence." And then the arbiter determines and has to figure out, is it valid, was it that person...
Did you get that?
Does that make sense? I mean, does that make sense?
I'm making sure Lisa got your statement. Councilman Martin.
Well, I'd like to tie the evidence to be submitted in connection with the complaint. In other words, the person that signs it under oath needs to be the one that brings in the evidence to support their complaint.
So it says, "Evidence must be provided with the town's official complaint form." Does that cover it?
Yes, ma'am.
You're amazing. Okay, are there other concerns or issues?
And we need to qualify within three weeks, where practicable within three weeks. If you've got a witness that's out of the country or something.
Shouldn't it be after they've already presented to council?
What do you mean?
It doesn't say this person has presented it to council yet. This person gets it.
Well, I mean, I thought that was amalgamation of the discussions about it. Mr. Kelly's point is, the way it reads now, the decision will be communicated to the complainant, that doesn't necessarily say the timing when it will be presented to the council.
Simultaneously to the council.
Then we need to add that to that sentence. Lisa, are you getting?
See where to put it in.
You getting carpet tunnel yet over there, Lisa?
Oh, I've got a couple of times 15 years ago.
Within three weeks, we're practical.
Counsel.
Communicated to the complainant and council. Okay. Is this worse enough?
Yeah, I think those changes are good. The most important thing is that the form will take on the characteristics of an affidavit, which means providing false statements on an affidavit is subject to perjury, which is a class, is a class F felony, which you get jail time. Also opens up that person to be liable for civil suits under that affidavit, so I'm hoping that that makes people think twice before they decide to try to file some, you know, false or misinformed complaint against someone. I'm glad that council has agreed to support the affidavit process, because I think that further strengthens the accountability factor in making sure that this is taken seriously and isn't some, you know, circus with 100 complaints a month coming in here.
You know, and the fact that also it's, the form is a public record.
Right.
Right, so that's yet one more check and balance to stop any kind of frivolous complaints.
Mr. Eads, does that caution need to be placed on the form?
We can do that if you'd like.
I just think it would be an added deterrent.
It says affidavit today on the form.
Well, the people don't realize what that actually means, but so to be able to inform them that they're subject, you know, to perjury.
I think the prefatory sentence underneath the caption should say, "I make the following under the penalty of perjury." And then on the affidavit, I mean, on the notary signature, we can change that to sworn to and subscribed before me. It's more legal.
Great idea.
I'm like you, Councilman Bob, we beat the horse.
Well, I think we're discussing some really difficult issues, especially with social media. And we're also trying to ensure that there is a pathway for a citizen with a legitimate complaint to obtain some form of relief, all while balancing the fact that it's not about personal dislike or objections to a decision. You know, that's what elections are for. It's about clear ethical misbehavior. So, and I think we've put in a number of safeguards, and hopefully we'll have a very thoughtful and professionally trained arbiter who will look at it and investigate it, and then make a recommendation to us, and it ultimately resides with council to decide, all right? And we are held to a higher standard because we all have sworn an oath, so there's lots of levels to this. Do you have all these changes? Because I really do.
I have two questions.
Okay, yeah. I thought you might.
In the bold sentence, the arbiter's decision, and I know there was discussion to change that either to recommendation or assessment, and I didn't know which word you landed on.
Recommendations.
Okay. And then the other one was, back to that long sentence that nobody likes.
I'm sorry, and I know we're beating this to death, but since the arbiter's not elected official, I would rather it be assessment.
I think it's a better word.
Simply because I don't want the arbiter to say, I find this complaint to be credible, and I recommend you take the following disciplinary action, I just.
I'll defer to council, so assessment.
I mean, y'all are the boss, not the arbiter.
Understood.
Okay, and then the sentence with multiple filings from the same individual toward one individual, we were gonna take everything out, pass permitted, but then I think Councilmember Karpner had an additional amendment. So the way I hear it is, maybe there would need to be the word when in the beginning of the sentence. When multiple filings from the same individual toward one individual regarding the same topic are received, was your recommendation then, comma, the arbiter will have the latitude to synthesize, was that the word you used? All the complaints. Does that work?
Did use synthesize.
Good question, word. I just make sure right down.
It needs to be incident.
Yes, I have topic for incident, and I have the change about, the assessment will be communicated to the complainant and council simultaneously, within three weeks, when practicable.
So there was a motion on the table, are we willing to amend the motion?
And we're gonna add numbering, I'm sorry, we're gonna add numbering and fix the forms that all fits on one page, and change the notary to sworn and subscribed before me.
And add a prefatory sentence, "I make the following under penalty of perjury."
I'll make the motion to accept the changes as recorded faithfully by the clerk.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you for working through that. It's unanimous. Thank you for working through that.
Yes.
I know it was a slugfest, but well done.
Well done.
Consideration of cell phone tower leases. David.
I will turn this over to Mr. Reed for update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you recall last, or you may recall last month, we went over the Verizon lease and there were some significant changes. Verizon has come back to us with some, with a response. Some of them, they say, my communications that they can't accept. However, I understand from Mr. Kelly that he had a personal conversation. And there was only one change that they said they could not accept that had to deal with mutual termination within the renewal periods. And their point there was, if we spend all this money and make this big investment, you know, if we want to walk away from our investment, that's fine, but the town shouldn't be able to kick us off. That, that takes away our incentive to make the assessment. So, long story short, at this point, I'd like to hash out all of this deeper with their contact person as well as, because we, you recall, we're gonna walk those over to the cellular lease too and request that we table this until the March meeting.
Counsel?
Counsel's suggestion makes sense, right? Still in motion, still negotiating?
Yes, sir.
Still moved?
Still moved, seconded, agreed to.
Do we need a motion, Lisa?
Yes, he said so moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilman.
All in favor? Unanimous. New business, consideration of a resolution adopting a comprehensive transportation plan for Brunswick County.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan as was presented to us this evening.
All in favor? Unanimous. Consideration of requests for proposals for a search firm to lead the town manager hiring process.
Yes. The mayor, Councilwoman Carter, and myself met numerous times. I hope everybody's had a chance to read this. What, we have narrowed down the 10 search firms that we want to talk to and see if, if they qualify for us to send them a request for proposal. And we came up with this language on minimum qualifications, how to go about doing it, what questions we want to ask them, what questions they're gonna ask prospective candidates, how they're gonna go about doing it, who's gonna lead their charge. So we've come up with, we spelled it out pretty good in about 10 pages. We did some compromising, we did some soul searching, and this is what we came up with and brought to you all. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read it. If you have questions about it, hopefully, we can give you our, our thoughts.
I have some questions. And I shall be brief. So i- in the introduction, the, the very first sentence, are, are we seeking there a candidate who has executive experience and professional-level town manager? Is that about experience? What, what does executive mean there? I'm, I'm right, in the introduction, the first sentence, on 12.
Third line down on page two.
Yeah. We want a senior level is what we meant by that.
Okay, but you, I'm fine with if you're saying you want executive experience. That, that's fine. It covers a broad swath of things, right? And in the last paragraph on page two, and this is just nomenclature, but I think what we have more frequently used in the last sentence is either smart growth or managed growth as opposed to balanced growth. And I don't know that it's the density of development, it's rather, it's the pace of development. Seems to me it would be, okay.
Yeah. We, we were comparing our notes, coming up with language and.
I'm just giving you suggestions.
And these are, are good suggestions. I don't think the three of us would have a exception. I can't speak for them.
Page three, number two, under government, town of Oak Island. In the last sentence, council sets policies for the operation of Oak Island, Oak Island Town Government. Council appoints a town manager. The manager has administrative oversight and executes policy per town council.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And then on the next page, on page four, speaking of our favorite subject tonight, in the first set, full sentence on the top of the page, screening to include background criminal credit checks references, and I think we want to say social media checks there. Which, yeah, we missed a couple of points. And my last concern, and maybe it's just me and the hour is really very, very late, but under page eight, acceptance of RFP terms, right? So the proposal's a binding offer for a sentence. Person who signs it is legally executed, authorized to execute it. A submission in response to this RFP acknowledges acceptance by the proposer of all terms and conditions. That's clear. The next sentence is confusing to me. A proposer shall identify clearly and thoroughly any variations between its proposal and the RFP. I mean, by definition, if they're not conforming to the RFP, we're gonna reject them. They don't need to explain why they have variations. That, that sentence makes no sense.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
It's like a bid that's rejected because it didn't meet the minimum requirement, so.
Yeah.
That's confusing at best in there.
So it's the last two sentences that
Yeah.
will come out? Okay, I'm just trying to keep up with the edits.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Can you, can you?
Thoughts? That last edit, John, where was this? Page eight?
Page eight, under the paragraph heading, "Acceptance of RFP Terms."
Okay.
Right, so, so, submission in response to the RFP acknowledges acceptance by the proposer of all terms and conditions. And says, "A proposer shall clearly identify where they vary." Well, if they vary, goodbye.
Yep.
Okay, I thought it was me, but I've read that a couple of times. That's really contradictory.
Right.
Okay. The other stuff is just language suggestions, so.
So can you repeat the, the last sentence in the government of the town of Oak Island?
Yeah, I would make that, under this form of government, the town council sets the policies for the operation of Oak Island government. This is a run-on sentence, by the way. While the council-appointed town manager executes policy and has administrative oversight.
You added "executes policy."
Yeah, he executes policy. That's what he does.
Exactly what.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other edits?
Did, and we agreed to managed growth and pace of development, correct?
That's my suggestion, yeah.
Where was that one?
And we, we.
We welcome the suggestion.
Two?
Two.
Yeah, page very bottom.
That's good.
Mark, Bob, any thoughts, sir?
I think Brian was getting ready to say something, no?
Brian, I'm, I'm just confused on page 10. Reach a contract. This is a RFP. It's not a contract until a contract's entered in. Maybe I'm missing something.
No, you're right.
Welcome to the dance, counselor.
Mm-hmm.
So that just comes out?
We were cutting and pasting at that point, yeah.
Mr. Reed, just, your recommendation, just take that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it, it's not a contract until it's a contract.
Okay.
And, and there's another reference. If you go up two more sections, assignment, delegation, then right above that, paragraph three, the contract documents may be executed to a more counterpart.
That's confusing.
Now that I read it.
Yeah.
Well. What that says is that you can, I believe what that says is that you can, if you sign one contract and the proposer signs a contract, it becomes one
Contract.
Contract, or are we gonna require wet signatures on, or electronic signatures on just one document? We just want one document, then we should take that.
Well, you'd be smarter to have electronic signature on one document.
Thank you, Brian.
This is the first up. The certification of independent price determination on page nine, I mean, what price are we?
That describes if two firms decide to go together and work as one. So, Brian, just to make sure I've got this right, on page 10, number three, we would just take out the first sentence? And the second sentence could remain as being executed and delivered by electronic signature? Is that?
And, you know, I don't know that it's necessary here. I think you have to select a firm and then enter into the contract.
So just pull three out, is your recommendation?
Okay.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Coral, yes, ma'am.
We were working from templates.
No, it's a good document.
Oh, yeah.
Mark, Bob?
One question if I could. So the, under fee proposal, something to consider. Oftentimes recruiters will have two different fee structures. One would be for candidates that they source, and one would be for candidates that the client sources and sends to them. So maybe we have some verbiage in there and ask them to, including the fee proposal, for candidates that are not sourced by them, where they're, they're doing all the screening.
Discount rate.
Well, just ask what their, maybe we can ask them to break out what their fee looks like and treat it just a little bit differently.
We can do that when they present.
What we discussed around this was anything that comes in to any of us immediately gets sent to the search firm. We don't look at it, we don't evaluate it. We, so in, in that case, it's, while they may not be finding that person, they're certainly evaluating that person. Is that, does that answer your question?
It, it does. Well, it kind of does, but the, you know, the lot of the fee, the purpose of the fee is for them to do the legwork and to, and to put qualified candidates in front of us. They're doing the heavy lifting. They're on the phones, they're reaching out. And if we give them resumes, their work is, is diminished. So just maybe a thought. I don't make.
No, 33% should go down to 25.
I mean, just see what they would, maybe they could just outline for any candidates that are presented.
I see what you're saying.
Presented by.
The client.
The client. Please indicate, and they may say, we don't, we, we charge one fee, whether we source them or you source them.
One more thing we can consider when we're reading through the proposals. Good thought.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Mark, any thoughts, sir?
Maybe just questions or comments. You know, we, we issue RFPs every year. Did, did staff, was, does there any engagement with staff at all in looking at this RFP, or they were completely excluded from the process?
They looked at it in terms of proofing it for us and, and changing some information that we had in here that wasn't exactly accurate.
Does this, is this RFP kind of like what I'd call a one-off? Like, is it following our normal RFP process? Or are we creating something unique with this RFP? I'm concerned about vendors may, may see if this is a new approach to responding to an RFP or dealing with an RFP. Are they gonna expect in the future to have, have a, a new process from us? Or is this a one-time only? Help me understand, is this a part of our normal RFP process? Or are we, like, swimming outside the lane here?
I guess I would ask how vendors are going to see this RFP if this RFP is sent only to 10 search firms, not suppliers, not service providers that work with the town in the course of general business? So I would, I, I don't see that as a, as a concern.
And we're qualifying the 10 search firms this week, so it may be six or seven once we discount a couple.
Okay. And do we have a backup person to receive responses? Whether that be our HR officer or the town clerk or? I, I'm assuming when we do RFPs, we don't just have one response option. Don't we have like a, a backup person to? What happens if, if the mayor is not available to check her mailbox here at town hall for an extended period of time? Do, do we have a backup plan?
It would fall to the, in the mayor pro town.
You're good with that, John?
Whatever it takes.
Okay.
Whatever you need.
All right.
You're a gamer.
Then my last comment.
But only in the event the mayor's not available. I don't want to be receiving all these documents unless it's necessary.
Well, I didn't know if that needed to be notated somewhere. Maybe it doesn't. I don't know. I just, I like having contingency plans. That's just, that's just how I am.
If they send it, if they send it to Mayor White at the town of Oak Island, then whoever handles our mail and puts it in our box will know the mayor has a broken leg, John, I'm putting it in your box.
Or you're picking it up out of her box.
Yeah.
Either or.
My last comment, I know it's late. We, we announced to the public earlier this evening how important these upcoming listening sessions are and that how we're excited to collect feedback and information. But yet, we're already prepared to make a decision on sending out an RFP. What if, what if these listening sessions say, "Don't, don't go seek an executive search firm and spend $60,000 or $70,000 in a search." We've already heard one public comment tonight suggesting, well, are there internal candidates that would, that are qualified and we don't spend $60,000 or $70,000 or $100,000 in an executive search? So that's my only comment is, we say we want to listen, but yet we're hurrying up and we're putting together an RFP and we haven't even listened yet. So I'll just leave it like that.
I'd be happy to address that. So first of all, if you read the listening session document, the questions that are going to be asked of citizens and business owners and staff are stated in here. We're not asking citizens or business owners or staff to define the process for us. That is the responsibility of this council, to define the process of how we find a new town manager. I can't speak for anybody else. I know you've been opposed to the listening sessions from the get-go. And like I said, I can't speak for anybody else, but I have 1,646 people who hired me to listen to them and work for them. And so I think it's our responsibility as a council, this is my personal opinion, our responsibility as a council to listen. Are we gonna include everything that they say? Not if it doesn't align with what the council believes ought to be, you know, if something's off the wall, we're not gonna, it's not guaranteed. We just want to listen to what they have to say. They live here, they work here, they pay taxes here. They ought to be do that right.
Well, the final profile would be under the approval, the consensus of council. And that would be fed into a draft job description for the process, and all of that would get sent. and we can save this process is a decision council needs to make.
What we're going to gain from the listening session has absolutely nothing to do with starting to get a search firm lined up.
I believe Mark's comment, I don't want to speak for you, is whether we need a search firm at all, if there's an internal candidate.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm interested in having the conversation on delaying trying to reach out to executive search firms. If we feel confident that there may be internal candidates who are qualified that deserve an opportunity to be screened or researched prior to sending this out. I've always been an advocate of perhaps looking at an interim town manager to give us a longer runway to make sure we find the right candidate, not just quickly find a candidate. I think it's very important that the culture and the needs of this community need to have a more diligent thought and research and search process for us to find the right candidate. I don't want to just hurry up and find a candidate. So if we haven't exhausted our own internal candidates first before we open this up to spending tens of thousands of dollars for an external executive search, I just, that's my concern. Now, maybe the time period that we get back responses, maybe we should be looking at trying to vet or identify internal candidates who are well-qualified and who might be interested. That could be an exercise that I don't hear anyone talking about, nor do I hear anyone talking about, well, how do we get through the budget workshop and then transition into operations? That's not an easy task. And Mr. Kelly's not going to be here for that transition. So there again, are we expecting to find the right candidate by, before that transition? Or are we just going to pick someone because we've got this deadline that we've got to transition from the budget to operations, right? So I just want to be, you know, sensitive, but yet smart about how we go after spending towns' resources, identifying qualified candidates. And, and I do think the listening session could very well disclose that people may not want someone from California to move here and be a town manager. I mean, that's.
I wouldn't want someone from California either.
Right, but that's, but that's the point of the listening sessions, is to collect that data. But yet, we're launching a national executive search request. So that's my concern.
I think, Mr. Martin, and thank you. I think you're right on, in my opinion. While we're doing our RFP and while we're studying the returns and what people have sent back to us, from tomorrow until that date is ample opportunity for us to do some internal searching before we enter into a contract with, with a national search firm. We called around to see what people, if other members like that. And we didn't get a total consensus, so we put it on hold. But I think it'd be a good idea to pursue the interims, if we have any inside people. Maybe nobody will respond. But if they do, we need to ask a whole bunch of questions before we spend money.
That seems easy enough to do. The, the dates on the RFP can be changed very easily. Even as they're stated, we're not projecting to enter into a contract until near the end of April. I mean, that gives us two months if we want to explore that, that process.
And we discussed that, Mark.
We.
Well, yeah, we, we did discuss to set the retreat. And I, and I think, well, it is certainly viable. If we had all of these diamonds on our backyard, we'd want to look at them, pick them up, see what kind of carrots they are. But the priority is to launch the search. And we talked in the very first hour of the retreat, and I know you weren't there, Mark, about needing Plan B. Because everyone, I think, looks at these timelines and said, they're just not real, it's not going to happen. So we need time to work on Plan B. We probably are going to need an interim. Looking at it now, everything would have to fall just right. And even then, right? Especially if the party were external and under contract somewhere. They're not going to be able to just pick up and go to Oak Island. So we haven't gotten to that yet, but that's up there in the priority list. We need a Plan B. And there are lots of ways to go about that. We haven't even talked about the direction we want to go there. But yes, you're right about that, we do need that. And we know that. I think, again, you weren't part of that conversation. But yeah, Plan B, we absolutely have to have it.
Or an interim, as well as a, is there a diamond in the rough that we even want to hire?
I, I won't say there isn't, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So along those lines, thank you for bringing it up. As Councilwoman Carter said, we probably have till the end of April before we would, if we started contacting these ten search firms and asking for RFPs the next week or two. It's end of April before we enter into a contract with them.
Well, the flip side of that is, let's say you only get seven firms, right?
Okay.
Right? And if these seven firms are really that good, they're going to be busy. You're not really going to have seven choices, right? All the more reason to have Plan B.
Some of our qualifying questions are, how busy are you? How many people will you put on this job?
Yeah, there you go.
And the likes of that.
But if they're really top-tier, they're, some of them are going to say, it's very attractive, but we're committed.
They can get to you, yeah.
But just, we also do have the option to change this timeline. If it, you know, if it feels too rushed, then we just, we, we pick the date we want to send it out and we just let the other dates trickle through based on what we discussed with Madam Clerk in terms of how long to leave it out there and, and things like that. So that's, I mean, that's a decision this group needs to make.
That's a point I was going to make, that this is not set in stone. If you want to extend these timelines, broaden the scope, that's your prerogative. The question, I guess, tonight is the form of the RFP. And content.
I think the form is good. The other thing that I would ask, and I don't, I'm sorry, I may have missed that detail when I read it. So this soup-to-nuts RFP, the firm comes in, right? They locate, they provide candidates, they give us suggestions for the interview. Are they going to recommend salary ranges when we actually get a candidate? Is that part of what we're asking them to do? Here's, here's why I'm saying that.
We discussed that, yes.
I don't, we, we did talk about it in the retreat. I don't want to get to the end of this process, right? Where all of us have committed all this time and the public is excited and we can't afford the person. Right, I want some kind of guidance on the financial side. And they will know that, right?
I think they will. I think part of that process might start with us, though, because when we were working through this, we talked about the need to establish a budget, not only a budget for the search process, but a budget for how much we're going to, going to pay somebody. And.
So that range would usually be in the job description?
But we wanted to wait until some of the search firms.
Fine, I, I'm sorry.
And that's why we put in, in your very first question.
I'm jumping ahead of where you are, but.
Well, that's why we call it an executive.
Concern, you don't want to end up with the candidate you're dying to have and you can't afford, not in your budget.
That's right, yeah. But that would be in the, the job description. And we will have, since we're giving them a draft, you know, and they're giving us back their best work.
Right, that's another conversation that we need to have.
Yeah, no, it's a fair point, because historically, we have a measuring tool, right? We look at other mayors and population size and budget size and number of departments. And we kind of slot our current town mayor, manager, to make sure that, you know, they're compensated competitively, right? Because we do have to compete here in this, you know, Brunswick County area and, and even, you know, Le, or Wilmington at times. So I think it is an important point, but I think they have some historical data as at least a starting point. But you're right, you know, the right candidate may look at that historical data of what other town managers are getting compensated and, and be off the table, you know, early on in the process. So I think it's valid to bring it up.
Once you select, once we select the search firm, I mean, the contact person, the persons, you will develop a very close personal relationship with the search firm. You'll get to know them, they'll get to know us. And, you know, you'll have this conversation that, you know, kind of give and take. And they're not going to present a candidate. I've worked with dozens over the years. They're not going to present a candidate that's outside of the parameters that we set.
They'll come down here and take a look at us before they even start looking.
And fall in love, and then good things happen.
They'll move in.
So what I've heard tonight, do we need to now come up with a job description that everybody's happy with and pass it around in the next two or three days and start soliciting?
You've got to do the profile first. So the RFP can go out while we do all of this other work, in my opinion.
But to get back to Mark's question, when are you going to entertain in-house people at what juncture?
There's a prior step there, Bill. And it came up tonight from the audience, but there needs to be a strategy to find an internal candidate or at least a process. We can't, we can talk about it all we want, but the way we've got this RFP spec and the way the preliminary profile is built, there aren't going to be long lines of people who are in our community who are able to do this or interested in doing it. But we should have a plan rather than just talk about it, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Or your point.
And, and just for the good of the order and information, the League of Municipalities has been a great resource so far to the work that we've been doing by providing job descriptions that give us where they're from so we know the population and how that compares to Oak Island, the salary, you know, the salary range, those kinds of things. So we're just, we're just gathering, you know, data that we'll need to, to go through.
And, and it'll come back to y'all, right? So we're simply a conduit.
Absolutely.
For collecting information and where we might make recommendations. But I do think, what I'm hearing at least, is we're in agreement that we need an interim. The question is, at what point we make that determination? And when would they start? So those are conversations to be had. There are different strategies we could apply there. But, I mean, all of these are decisions for council to make.
But you like our process thus far.
I think you've done a great job. I think the timeline is very doable. The amount of work that you've put into this is very evident. And so thank you to the three of you for the, doing an amazing job in a short period of time.
So if we incorporate the changes that we heard tonight, then the question is, as you see, we, we picked February fifteenth as the date to send out the RFP. Do we want to send it out, you know, without everybody's consent? Or do we need to change that date? And if so, what date would you all prefer it be issued?
Twenty-ninth is two weeks later than the fifteenth.
I, I don't think we should have an inordinate delay. Frankly, I, I don't know how many diamonds in our backyard we're going to find. And whatever process that we have for that, we're going to send them through the search firm. I want them vetted externally. I want it to be somebody's favorite son, right? So you guys have done a lot of work in a very short period of time. I think you may want to give yourself another week to fine tune this, right? And we're pretty much agreed that in all likelihood, we're going to need an interim down the road. So let's get the RFP right, let's get the profile right. Let's get the listening sessions, get that, get all that data ready. February fifteenth feels a little rushed, it's really tight.
You think so?
Yeah, give yourself.
I mean, we were trying to respond to the sense of urgency that was expressed at the retreat.
There's urgency, but just getting it right. And another week to fine tune it, I don't think will hurt you.
Would it be fair to ask council to present any other suggested edits by COB Friday? And then we could get it out next week?
You still have to approve it at a meeting.
So that was the advantage of having it tonight.
Yeah, I was going, I mean, if I can make a suggestion, you know, if you want to go through and we can call out the suggestions that were made tonight, and if you're all okay with those suggestions, then you could just approve it as amended. Just like you do with ordinance amendments.
I think given the hour, we have to trust you on this, Lisa.
Yeah. Page two, page three.
Yeah, I mean, I have one on page two to add pace of development. On page three.
Managed growth.
Managed growth.
Before we leave page two, under introduction, we had stated executive and professional level. Did we want to just state executive level, take out and professional? Or did you want both of those left in there?
I wanted experience put in there, that's what we're looking for, right?
Yeah.
Senior level experienced, or experience at a senior level. I thought senior levels.
I'm thinking of the white, the whiteboard in the retreat. Well-credentialed, well-educated, documented history of success, right? So that's what we're saying here, right?
And those are things that are going to go into our profile.
Yes.
If they're correct.
Yeah.
But we could add that here.
Could add it here, too.
Yeah. Somebody just tell me what to.
Experience executive.
But we're replacing that with what John said, well-documented. Say that again, John.
Well, no, that, that goes in the profile. I think Terry's right. I would just say someone with successful executive experience, which I'm going to presume is professional, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're not a startup. Go ahead.
Then on page three, in the last sentence, while the council-appointed town manager execute policy and has administrative oversight of town operations. On the next page, at the top of the page, add social before media. On the next page, page five, councilman Chulo had discussed having separate fees for candidates the firm provides versus candidates the town may have. I don't know if you wanted to address that there or actually on the appendix. I mean, it seems like you could just add a sentence on the appendix on the fee proposal. If there was a separate fee for candidates provided, okay. And then. Yes, on page eight, remove the last, well, beginning, a proposer shall identify. Remove the rest of that paragraph. Correct. And then on page ten, to remove number three. And then to remove damages of breach of contract.
Yep.
Put it ahead.
We're going to modify the issue deadline to February twenty-second.
I'm suggesting you give yourself a little more time.
Yeah.
Another week.
Yeah.
Just move everything back incrementally.
Agreeable to everybody?
Just get together next week, have a powwow session. Anything else to add?
Issued by February twenty-second.
I think that horse has been whipped pretty good, too.
You can send it out, it's up to you.
So how you want to word it?
So we're good on this?
Make a motion to accept the changes as recorded by the clerk in the RFP document.
Second?
All in favor? Unanimous?
Before we go any further, it's awfully late and Heather and Bill and Paul might like this. Can we just call it a night?
We have one more.
That was good. Come on, Bill. You've got to laugh.
We have one more.
That was good. Come on, Bill. You've got to laugh.
Consideration of a contract amendment and association budget ordinance amendment to resurface the pickleball courts. Is this David or Heather?
Well, it starts with me. So we've discussed the pickleball courts over the last few years. And Paul gave a, what the parking record advisory board was recommending. We had had several layouts over the past few years on modifications to the pickleball. We had had several layouts over the past few years on modifications to the pickleball courts. Heather had, last year, had talked and got some information from the two individuals on the tennis. They wrote and said they understood that pickleball is growing and, and those kind of things, so they were willing to give up their tennis courts to better pickleball. We were in the budgetary process at that time, and we chose to do the resurfacing of the, all the courts. And at that time, the price was, I don't remember exactly, but then we had to go back and get the price updated, and, and then the person came back with a higher price, and Scott's going to go over those here in a minute. And then we got to looking at it with all the play that we've been seeing, why don't we go ahead and look and see if we can do modifications instead of doing two different projects and having to spend the money twice? So looking back through that, talking with the advisory board, talking with Heather, talking with Scott, and talking to Catherine to make sure we had dollars, we asked the person to come, Scott visited with him on the site, they walked through. There was one other person that had put in a bid for it, but he was not repairing the surface or putting in leveling agents, so his numbers were lower until you add those factors in. And then, once he added the leveling factors, his prices were higher than what is presented to you tonight. So I think we've looked at all the options, and this is the, the best we can do currently. At the end of it, we'll have 12 pickleball courts. The area behind the metal building will have an area that we can put bleachers, at least one row of bleachers on the left hand, so they can sort of play the round robins and take the championship teams over to an area where they can be observed. And I think, working with the Rec Advisory Board on this, staff has the best recommendation, and we've made sure we had the dollars. And you can see the budget amendment, but staff's here to answer any questions that you have.
So, I know the hour's late, so I've been a little foggy here, but the original bid was competitive, and then it was rebid, there was only one successful bidder. So we added a new scope of work, and that was $51,000. But still, the base number, the way I do the math, went up $88,000. So what is that surge in price? What's driving that?
Can you explain that one, or really, I mean, that's just what came back?
134 became 222, plus $51,000 for the expansion into two additional courts. That's a big jump in price, unless I'm adding these numbers wrong, but I don't think so.
Prepare resurfaced one bank of six pickleball courts was 4680 for six courts. Correct? Is that what you're seeing?
I'm looking at the 23 numbers. Total project cost was 134,800.
Yes.
Now, the total project is 22800, plus 51 for expanding into two new courts. I make that difference to be $88,000 upcharge a year later.
Besides resurfacing, we're now adding leveling the court, aren't we, Scott? Is that one of the differences?
It's leveling, plus there's a, a mesh material that's put in to where the cracks don't transfer back through, so it gives you a much longer lifespan. What I'm looking at, two banks of two outdoor tennis courts to start with was a total of $88,000.
I just want to understand what drove that price up.
I'm trying to understand what you're asking me, so. And that was for the, the two tennis courts, and then 134,800 was for the pickleball courts.
So now, it's 2024, still, yeah.
Yes. The extra 56 was to convert, is the extra work it takes to convert it to a pickleball court, because you got, you've got more nets, more poles, more fencing, more-
Where I'm going, though, is, with what frequency will we have to perform maintenance? Is it five years, 10 years? Because obviously, part of this cost is, we didn't do the proper maintenance in the proper intervals.
That's, that's part of the reason we wanted that mesh, because that's not, that's going to keep a lot of the maintenance out. It won't require any crack sealing. It's like a 10-year rotation before anything would have to be done to, I mean, other than cleaning and, and just-
So if I'm in the 2029 budget, am I going to see another resurfacing maintenance?
Not if everything is done correctly, no, sir.
Are they going to give us a warranty?
It's in here somewhere.
Yeah, there is a basic warranty that comes with it.
Yes.
Us adding the, the membrane to it increased the life expectancy. I don't remember exactly what the warranty, right, just mean, I can't think of it all, but I can't remember what that was.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
I, I guess the point is, we, we've, in the past, had a somewhat checkered history on some of these things, right? So when it first came on council seven years ago, we suddenly had to replace the entire fleet, right? We were buying cars right and left, we were a car dealership. I want to make sure that if we spend this amount of money, it's going to carry us forward for a reasonable interval before we need to do additional maintenance, right? So that's why I'm asking about the maintenance schedule.
Right.
Okay.
But I think the reasonable amount of time is 10 years.
I'm happy with 10 years.
Not, not to say that they, where, where we're at with the water in between, the membrane, I mean, we're hoping everything stays exactly right, but I do not have the warranty in front of me to date what that was.
So, so then, to continue on with your point, on page 128 of the agenda packet, on their quote at the bottom where they say, no warranty on cracks repaired using crack filler only.
Correct.
And then, a note that the asphalt tennis courts are 20 years or older and are past the expected normal service life and need reconstruction for long-term stability. So I hate to, to keep beating this, but we keep seeing situations where we're putting money into things that potentially need to be replaced. So what's the long, what's the long-term plan? I mean, I'm here in 10 years, but it sounds like this is telling us that they need to be torn up and redone.
So the way the person explained it a year ago when I was out there with them, the reason why we were going to the membrane filler instead of using just the filler of the cracks, was to extend the life of the courts-
Okay.
-for another 10 years. Now, that would be up to Heather and them to present a capital plan, or a strategic plan, or whatever the word of today is, where there are three to five-year plan, and show that these courts could be, be replaced, and these are the dollars that it's going to cost in X, X and Y years. But this does buy you some more time, just like we just did the floor in the pier house. We all know the pier house needs to be replaced. Again, we're, there's other things that you're exactly right, that at some point, there needs to be a table laid out, that everything in town, what it needs to be done.
We, we should take the, the broadest possible scope that we can and say, okay, these facilities have X amount of lifespan left, these are the regular intervals of maintenance. And then, there are some items, as my colleague just pointed out, that it may be more cost-effective to replace it totally and to keep repairing it, right? So that kind of strategic thinking allows you to invest smartly and contain costs, and so we're not looking at these upcharge, you know? We've been talking about the pickleball courts for a long time, so I'm happy we're going to finally do something. But what I'm trying to get to is a regular predictable maintenance schedule, and I know you've just given us a capital project proposal, that helps, too, but I think we need to put all of that together, you know, one big infrastructure package. Not to mention, I left out the, the crown jewel, the sewer system, and what that's going to cost in ongoing maintenance and replacement, right? It's another hole, which you gave us a staggering, staggering number a while ago, was in the order of millions, so.
But we, we need exactly that, and it's called a lifecycle costing plan, and we don't have one, so we need one.
I like that, that's, that's a good term. Okay.
Transition to a little bit on that.
Thank you, Scott. Just wanted to understand the upcharge, that's all.
And I, I do want to say, the 20-year note on there, that's, that's a very subjective kind of thing. I mean, they haven't watched the whole thing, there's no raveling, there's no, there's a lot of issues that I'm not seeing that kind of may be indicated in this.
And it's from the vendor, not a third-party objective? Yep, understood.
Well, I've waited two years to make this motion, I'd like to make it.
I think we should replace the tennis courts with clay courts. It'd be easier to maintain, I'm just kidding. It's late.
I make a motion to approve the contract amendment in the amount of $51,868 to add converting two tennis courts to pickleball courts, in addition to the $222,800 for resurfacing, and to approve the associated budget ordinance.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? So I know this will all disappoint you terribly, but the council member who asked for a closed session has withdrawn that request. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous.
We didn't know how to adjourn, is that she?